Good afternoon and welcome to the April 29, 2025, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Asadrian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
Will you please read the closed session items? 1A, conference with real property negotiators, discussion of potential acquisition of former Glendale College of Law and adjacent properties on North Glendale Avenue and North Everett Street owned by Gateways Hospital and Mental Health Center. B, conference with real property negotiators, discussion of potential lease of Glendale Civic Auditorium at 1401 North Verdugo Road. Item C, conference with real property negotiators, discussion of potential acquisition of property at 1000 South Central Avenue. 1D has been pulled. 1E, conference with real property negotiators, discussion of potential renewal of leases of Glendale Galeria parking structures. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do you anticipate reporting out on any of these items?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we will recess the closed session. Good evening, everyone. Please come to order. The City Council is returning from closed session with nothing to report. May we have roll call?
Yes, councilmembers Asadrian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Will you all please rise and join me in our flag salute? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the city clerk will have the invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino Tangva people. I will now read a short quote by Gibran Khalil Gibran, Lebanese-American writer and poet from his book, The Prophet. "You give but little when you give of your possessions; it is when you give of yourself that you truly give." Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for April 29, 2025, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on April 25, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, the next item?
Next, our presentation is on appointments. The first item is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, May 6, 2025, by Assistant City Manager John Tachalian.
Mr. Tachalian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Next week, our housing authority has approval, only has approval of minutes on the agenda. We do have a special meeting in the afternoon of the Glendale City Council with two items. The first would be from Community Services and Parks regarding the 2024 Senior Needs Assessment, and the second item will be from Public Works, seeking to reject all bids and seek authorization to negotiate with qualified bidders on the Artach Avenue project. For the evening's council meeting, there's a number of consent items. Under action items, however, there's six. The first two from Glendale Water and Power, the first item being their Energy Risk Management Policy and Trading Authority policy update. The second item from that department would be utilization of an alternative project delivery method for their water advanced meter infrastructure system replacement project, or the AMI project, which most people know it as. The next item from Fire Department would be a request to establish a standardization of specialized high-capacity lifting equipment, followed by a report from Public Works seeking approval of a purchase and sale agreement to acquire a property located at 1745 Gardena Avenue. City Attorney will present the adoption of rules pertaining to the council meeting procedures into quorum, and the last item that evening will be an update from Metro Staff regarding the NoHo to Pasadena BRT, or Bus Rapid Transit, project.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next is a proclamation designating April 2025 as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month.
Thank you, I'd like to invite Diane Lambalot, Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women, and Deborah Sa from the YWCA, Glendale-Pacadena, serving as CEO. I will give you the floor first.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Diane Lambalot, and I have the privilege of serving as the Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women. April 2025 marks the 23rd anniversary of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, also known as SAM, a time dedicated to raising awareness and promoting prevention of sexual assault, harassment, and abuse. The journey towards this recognition began long before its official declaration in 2001. In the 1970s, the establishment of the First Rape Crisis Center and the first Take Back the Night event were pivotal moments in the movement. These efforts not only provided support for survivors, but also created public spaces for them to reclaim their voices. Over the years, advocates and survivors pushed for legislative changes such as the Violence Against Women Act of 1993, which helped establish national support for sexual violence prevention and survivor resources. This ongoing activism proved that change is possible when we stand united. Today, SAM serves as a reminder of the resilience of survivors and the importance of standing with them. It also symbolizes our commitment to support and believe survivors and to continue fighting for a world free of sexual violence. As we observe this month, let's reaffirm our dedication to this cause and commit to creating lasting change that ensures survivors are always supported, empowered, and heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam CEO.
Good evening, I'm Deborah Sa, CEO of YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena. Thank you, councilmembers, for this opportunity to raise awareness about sexual assault and acknowledging that sexual assault continues to plague our society. According to the City of Glendale's Commission on the Status of Women's 2023 Report on the Status of Women and Girls, 85% of survivors of sexual assault in the United States are women. One out of six women and one out of 33 men survived rape or attempted rape in their lifetimes. In 2019, rape made up 7% of violent crimes in Glendale. That's pretty comparable to the City of Los Angeles. And we know that rape, especially in immigrant communities, are underreported. We at the YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena are eager to partner with you to prevent sexual assault in our community. I would like to invite everyone, especially councilmembers who are normally dressed more formally, to wear jeans tomorrow. It's a great conversation piece to talk about how we need to believe survivors more. There was a survivor of rape in Italy who was told that she couldn't have been raped because she was wearing jeans. So, and oftentimes, women are blamed for what they're wearing for the assault. So it's a great conversation piece for all of you to have with folks that come your way as you wear jeans that normally you wouldn't. And as a mother of a daughter, I can't think of a better gift than making our community safer women and girls. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and your words were strong, and they're perfect lead-ins to the language of our proclamation, which is as follows. Whereas the month of April is nationally recognized as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and whereas every 68 seconds someone in America is sexually assaulted, approximately one out of every six American women has been the victim of an attempted or completed rape in her lifetime, and the majority of sexual assault victims are under the age of 30, 54% between the ages of 18 and 34. And whereas with proper education, there is compelling evidence that we can successfully reduce the incidence of this physically and psychologically damaging crime, and whereas Denim Day, observed on April 30, tomorrow, as you mentioned, originated from a 1998 Italian Supreme Court decision that overturned a rape conviction based on the victim's attire, leading to international protests where individuals wore denim to challenge misconceptions surrounding sexual assault. And whereas Denim Day has since become a global movement encouraging people to wear jeans as a visible statement against harmful myths and stereotypes about sexual violence and to stand in solidarity with survivors. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and forcible rape, allowing these crimes to persist and victim survivors to be revictimized. Now therefore, I are a Najarian, hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and April 30 as Denim Day, and encourage all residents to participate in awareness efforts, wear denim on Denim Day, and commit to building a safer community. Do my colleagues have any comments? Councilmember Asadrian.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, and just want to say thank you to the YWCA, the Commission on the Status of Women, as well as all the organizations in our community that work in this space. I did want to make a note that I have brought this up in previous meetings, I think about a year and a half ago, but, and I'm not ready to make the move now, but there is an incredible app that exists for both domestic violence and assault. It's called SafeView. I've been meeting with both of our staff as well as community organizations like the YWCA, brought in the Commission on the Status of Women, as well as the Armenian Relief Society, for example, yesterday, for us to see how we can potentially partner in using this app that would not only allow easy access to be able to report when someone's going through a domestic violence case or being assaulted just walking through the parking lot, but provide a lot of community resources and online mental health support and so forth to our communities. I think one of the things that was noted in the comments that I think will play into the use of this app is how, you know, we speak about being the city that has the largest immigrant population in California, and we know that in immigrant communities, both domestic violence and rape cases and any kind of assaults are underreported. The use of this app would also allow for us to be able to track how many residents are utilizing the app, in what cases, and what kind of information that they're seeking, which would allow for us to make better decisions when it comes to policies and programming that may not be part of the, you know, the 635 calls that we get for domestic violence, as an example, from last year. And so I look forward to the conversations and hoping that soon enough we can bring that in. I think one of the recommendations that was made was provide that the YWCA is now not just YWCA Glendale, but also Pasadena. I'm also going to look to reach out to the City of Pasadena to see if they would also look to become partners with us on this. So thank you again.
Thank you. Any other colleagues with comments? And is there a speaker?
There is one public comment card on the table.
Before we do that, I'd like to keep us on a high note, and I would like to come down and present the proclamation, and then we'll have the speaker afterward. And any, of course, any colleagues that would like to join me at any time for any proclamation throughout the next year, please? I don't need to invite you, you're more than welcome to come down. Any takers? Oh, you're... Yes, it's the same. It's the same. And it's original signature, not autosome.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The speaker is Mr. Mohill. You have three minutes.
Evening, councilmembers, my name is Mike Mohill. As I sit here in the audience, listening about rape, domestic rape and all that good stuff, I think about all the illegals in this country who have raped many, many women. Why don't we talk about the illegals who are in this country illegally and raping women night and day? I wish this commission brings up the illegals who are in this country for doing rape all the time. Hush, hush! We're getting political. Well, goddamn it, we are political in this country. Rape is a serious thing. It could be, you can be legal and illegal, and why doesn't the Women's Commission talk about illegals who come into this country and rape women and men? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Your comments. Let me just say that the point of this proclamation was to honor victims and to keep in mind the pain that they go through when they are assaulted sexually. Councilmember Asadrian.
And I'd also like to add that, as part of a post I did for Cal Cities Week this week, one of the slides on there was how we are ranked top five safest city in all of the nation, and then the other slide noted that how we have the largest immigrant population, and it's something that we take extreme pride in. So let's put those two together and see where that leads us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, let's move on to the next item.
Next are nominations for reappointment. Jeffrey Head Historic Preservation Commission, seat two, reappointment of head by Brotman and Asatrian for 15, 2025. Raffi Sawalian Historic Preservation Commission, seat two, replacing head, Brotman, Asatrian for 15, 2025. The next appointment is nomination is Vartan Jihanian Civil Service Commission, seat four, which is vacant by Garpetian for 15, 2025. Mayor Najarian, we do have one comment on this item.
Yes, let's hear the public comment.
And just to note, Ms. Rajah saw the first bullet, the first nomination, it's one of those two individuals, not both.
Yes, we will be deciding on one of two. And we'll hear the comment.
The public comment is by Chris Cragnotti. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of councils, members of council. I'm Chris Cragnotti, I'm the former Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, on which I served for almost eight years, and I'm here tonight in support of allowing Mr. Jeffrey Head to fill out his term on the commission. With the recent appointment of three new commissioners to the board, Mr. Head's presence on the commission is vital to maintaining much-needed continuity on the board. He's had a great year and three months so far. He's extremely qualified, he's been through the Mills Act process on two homes in Glendale already, he archives architectural history for various museums and things, all Southern California, prominent Southern California architects, he's very well, very knowledgeable. This commission is very nuanced, there's a lot of stuff, Councilman Garpetian knows, he was on it, there's a lot to know. There's a book this thick of stuff that we have to know about on this commission, and it's got a long learning curve. I was no expert when I started, but I feel like I did pretty good by the end of it, but there's a lot to know. And it's very, very important that commissioners have other commissioners and not just staff to rely on for this stuff. Daniel Paul is great, he's a wonderful resource for us, but so is Mr. Head, so I hope that you will strongly consider allowing him to continue his tenure there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcia, so do we need a renomination to start the process, or is that already on the table?
Mr. Mayor, so both individuals have been nominated, so if, I don't know if the council wants to deliberate or discuss, but if not, then somebody could either make a motion for one of them, or you could just go to the vote, and the council members can vote based on who they, who are the two candidates they wish to select.
Okay, since their names are already out, I would prefer that when it does come time to make a selection that we, when we're polled, that we just state the name of the person that we'd like to have the seat. Is there any discussion on, and we're only going to do the HPC commission at this onset? Any discussion on this, or shall we go straight to the polling? Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I'm sure we have two good candidates in front of us. I will, I have nominated Mr. Head, and I'll tell you the reason. He is very experienced, he's written extensively, if you've seen his CV, you'll see his list of publications, he's written on art, architecture, design, he does consulting work in the area, he's done grant writing in the area, all relevant to the work of the commission. I've found, watching the meetings and hearing about the meetings, that he's balanced, he's not an activist, he plays it down the middle. He's been on the commission, as the speaker just said, I think less than a year and a half. He was appointed through a panel with myself and Paula Devine, and I think he should be given the opportunity to complete his term, and I would also stress the point that the speaker made about continuity. We do have three new people on the commission now, and to have four and only one that's carrying over, I think would be disruptive to their work. So I would ask for your support for Mr. Head. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
The other ones, my recommendation, sorry.
I'm sorry. So the other candidate is Raffi Sawalian, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, if I may, you know, again, and I think Mr. Head brings a lot to the table, but I feel like Mr. Sawalian actually has practical experience that he also brings as it pertains to when we're making these decisions on the commission, how it impacts the process for designations, and what that also means for the applicants. It's more than just, you know, in theory and in writing about the subject matter, it's, you know, having practical experience in the impact of those decisions on the applicants. And so, again, this isn't, you know, I don't want this to turn into a back-and-forth and argument, I'm not looking for that. I just felt like, you know, he brings a wealth of knowledge in that space for this commission, and that is why I have made the recommendation, and I think Mr. Brotman and I just disagree on what we're looking for, for that seat.
Are there any other comments? So, Mr.?
No, listen, I will say that I know Mr. Sawalian, I've known him for a number of years, our kids went to the same preschool, he's a contributing, active member of our community, a wonderful individual, and I think he does bring a different perspective, and his own perspective was as a, someone who has a seasoned background in real estate transactions and real estate in the city. At the same time, I am concerned about the continuity on some of these boards and commissions, and I'll be supporting Mr. Head to continue the work that he's doing, just so the newer members that we've appointed collectively as a council have that tribal institutional memory still available to them. So I might, I'll be supporting Mr. Head.
Okay, I would like to say this is a good news, bad news story. The good news is that we are fortunate as a city council and as a city to have such two well-qualified candidates running for this position. The bad news is, we have to pick one of them, and granted, each one does have a slightly different area of expertise. I perhaps can see how council members were not able to decide on which one would be the very best. So why don't we go to a roll call, and we will state the name of the individual that we'd like to take the commission seat.
Councilmembers Asadrian.
Sawalian.
Brotman.
Head.
Garpetian.
Jeffrey Head.
Kasakian.
Jeffrey Head.
Mayor Najarian.
Sawalian. We do have a winner? Selectee?
As Mayor, I would hope that, you know, Mr. Sawalian still remains interested, and when there's another opportunity to serve, I think he'd make an excellent addition to our boards and commissions, whether it's on HPC or another one.
Well said. Congratulations, Mr. Head.
And if I, if I could just say one thing, it is important to remember that some of these commission appointments, well, they're all co-terminous with various council members' terms, so some seats will be opening up in...
2026?
June, July of 2026, so people that are interested, that weren't able to serve on one of these commissions, like Mr. Sawalian or anyone else, should keep their eye open, their eyes open, and apply if they are interested.
Right, and as you said, for all our commissions, there is going to be some turnover.
Yeah.
Thank you. The next appointment is regarding the Civil Service Commission, seat number four. Does anyone wish to be heard? Mr. Garpetian?
Well, if there are no comments or discussions, I'd like to move the item.
Nominating Mr. Jihanian.
Jihanian, yes.
Any comments from the public?
No comments.
Cards? Any other comments from council? Then we can just take a roll call, vote yea or nay on this.
Councilmembers Asadrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Jihanian. Okay, congratulations.
We get the name.
The civil service is slightly different, as you know, it doesn't get a lot of the notoriety that other commissions get. Your work is very technical at times, and you toil with attorneys and applicants, and thank you for your commitment to serve. Next item, please.
Next, our consent items, including minutes, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Mayor Najarian, we do have a comment on item 4F.
On 4F, so why don't we get a motion to move A through E?
So moved. Second.
Let's take roll call on A through E.
Councilmembers Asadrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Yes.
Kazakian.
Yes.
Miranjarian.
Yes. Please read 4F into the record.
4F is management services regarding chess tournament sponsorship request. One motion approving a $12,000 sponsorship for the California State Open Chess Tournament and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary agreements with the event organizers. Two, resolution of appropriation to appropriate $12,000 for a sponsorship for the California State Open Chess Tournament.
Thank you. And who is the individual that requested to speak?
Beth Brooks. You have three minutes.
Yeah, I'm always fascinated to see what the priorities of the city council are. And I see that there's never any money for low-income elderly renters who choose between rent and food, but there's $12,000 to sponsor a chess tournament. So once again, you've shown your priorities, and that's all I have to say. This was so frivolous, I can't even believe that that was even an item. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Does council have any comments on item 4F? If not, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members Asadriyan.
Yes.
Brahman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kazakian.
Yes.
Miranjarian.
Yes. Next item.
Next are city council and staff comments.
Okay, I think I'm just going to go from my left to my right and invite the first council member, Garpetian, if he has any comments.
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to mention a few of the events that I attended last week, mostly related to Armenian genocide commemorative events. First one was April 21st at the Alex Theater, April 24th at the Partridge Plaza Rally for Justice. Sunday, we had the, yesterday, the day for yesterday, we had the ARS 115th Anniversary Event, Armenian Relief Society Celebration Event. And I was a principal for a day at Wilson Middle School. This is, this was the second time that I did it. First one was at Glendale High. It was a, you know, when your kids grow up and they're out of public schools, you forget how fun it was. So I got there early, like 8:00 in the morning. They had a parking reserve for me. Principal Akverdian, I want to thank him for his warm welcome. Introduced me to his staff, to his teachers, faculty members, to the students. And every morning, they start their classes with the band playing. So it's energized already. They have high energy going into the classrooms. And afterwards, and we visited so many different classes, from math to science to robotics to English. And then we ended up, ended our day with lunch at the GUSD headquarters. And every person who was the principal for the day, they came in and we shared our experiences, and they were all very positive. And I want to thank Principal Akverdian for doing a job well done. Because if you are a principal, you have to deal with your teachers, with your staff, with the students, with the superintendent, and also the GUSD board. So it's a difficult job, but he's doing a great job. As far as, now that we have a new mayor, I think we need to make some changes. One is the angle of the camera. I think you should go back to what it was before or have a split screen that can show the council as well as the face of the speakers. The rules board over here, I think, I don't know if anybody reads it or not. I think there is, there is one outside the door as well. I think that should go because it's, it's not a good gesture, I think. The, the other issue that I would like to raise is our invocation. I think we need to, I think it's the city clerk's offices. They have a huge load of work that they need to do. I want to ask our mayor and the city manager to look into an option to organize and invite people to come in and do the invocation. I'm not saying every week, but at least every other week, once a month, three times a month, whatever the number is. Invite people to do the invocation. You know, I've been here for almost over a year. We had 35 to 40 meetings. And we only had maybe five or six people doing the invocation from the faith community. I think it's important for our community, from every faith and every denomination. I'm not saying one versus the other. And they, I think they need to be invited, like we had before. I'd like to thank everyone who attended two weeks ago, our mayor's selection meeting, and the people who called in as well. I think it was important for the members of our community to watch these meetings, to be involved, to see how the process is, how the new select, mayor's selection process works. It's important for us to be involved in it. I know some people were surprised, some people were shocked, some people were angry, some were outraged, but this is the process. This is how the process works. I know people that, you know, when I saw the anger in people's face and their body language. So I went back and in last couple of weeks, I watched our last meeting, and I also watched two meetings prior to that to see what was the reason for the anger. And I think this was like, they were expecting something based on the ordinance that we have, and we had totally something 180 degrees opposite of it. And I think that's what kind of surprised them, and they reacted to it. And they called it a political ambush. And it was, it could have planned differently. And I was not part of that plan. It could have planned differently. But I think this is, this is a lesson learned. And I want to apologize to my family that they were here and they were disappointed. They were kind of, anyways, I want to apologize to them. I will never put them in this position again. And I will never allow anyone to put my family in that position again. The problem was that the best interest of the city clause was used. We could have done this without having that, that meeting to be run the way it was done. So because that clause was used, from here on, I will inform the members of the community of every decision that was made in the city, whether it's a project, whether it's a program, whatever it is, which I believe is not in the best interest of the city, and let them be the judge. So that was a mistake, that clause. And I think this ordinance has to come back and completely be thrown away because it was a self-serving ordinance, and nobody believed in it anyways. But with that, that's where, that's where I am on last meeting. And again, I apologize to everyone who maybe thought that I was, you know, pointing out the issues that they did like or they didn't like. But this could have been handled differently. And with that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Kazakian?
I'm okay.
Councilmember Asadriyan?
Right. I have some housekeeping items, but I'll start off with, I know Mr. Garpetian just mentioned the camera angle. It was part of a discussion that we had as a council, and there was a vote taken on that specific issue. I would like to inquire when that item is coming back. This wasn't, this was orally discussed when we were talking about some different changes that we wanted on the council. And so, that's already been decided, and so.
Councilmember Satyan, that item, the council meeting order and rules and the rules of the quorum is planned to come in front of council next week, May 6.
Okay, all right. And then I'll note that for Armenian genocide commemoration, I did join our state officials in Sacramento, both for Armenian genocide recognition as well as Armenian Advocacy Day in our state's capital. I want to take an opportunity to say thank you to Senator Perez as well as Assemblymembers Harabedyan and our Assemblymember Nick Schultz, as well as Jessica Colosa for leading the resolutions on each of the floors. On Tuesday, I joined for the Advocacy Day for AB 91, the MENA Inclusion Act that's being led by, again, Assemblymember Harabedyan. And Senator Perez had also joined us at the press conference. There was also the Cal Cities Leaders Summit Wednesday through Friday. It was an opportunity also for cities to get together and advocate for policy changes and funding. I had an opportunity to meet with Speaker Rivas as well as a follow-up meeting that Councilmember John, Councilmember Brahman joined in on with Treasurer Ma's office. I would say that, and I've communicated this to our city manager on several occasions at this point, as well as to staff. Any of the meetings that were held, were held because I had personal contacts and I had reached out. And I think there needs to be better diligence done by our lobbyist. This was an opportunity for Glendale to join different meetings. And while other cities had that opportunity, we have had a list of policies that were supposed to be our priority that were, you know, we were not part of those discussions. We as council, even until the last minute, didn't even know that we could testify. That is the responsibility of somebody that is our SAC lobbyist, that should have been doing that. And so I recognize that, you know, it may have been a very tough week with a long list of items in front of our lobbyists, but we are, if we are paying as a city to someone, then I have the expectation that when you have two elected officials that are up in Sacramento, that you are utilizing us and our presence for our city to our full potential. And I think it was very short-lived because had I not had those contacts and reached out to folks and whatnot, that due diligence should have been done by the lobbyist. And so my hope is that, you know, as we progress through this year, we also look at those priority bills that we had put forth, that we get clear direction on where we can make amendments. One of those items was the, looking at how we stop substance abuse rehabs in our residential zones, which has been an issue for our community. My understanding is one of our neighborhoods has 48 of them. And there's no way for us to stop these things unless we are able to push for policy changes on the state level. So I don't want us to continue sitting here and saying, well, it's a state rule, so therefore, I want us to be proactive in how we're both lobbying and advocating for the needs of our community and for our city. And so I don't know what that takes, Mr. Glanian, but, and I recognize I'm now voicing this publicly, but it does need to be addressed because when I look at how involved the other cities were and how involved they were in both the Cal Cities activities and meetings and where we stood, I really felt like we fell short. So I did need to address that because it's been really getting under my skin since last, last week, so. You don't have to, if you don't want to, you don't have to.
Councilmember Satyan, Miranjarian, members of the council, the only thing I can offer up is, and I've stated this before, but publicly, that my staff and I will address the shortcomings of any of our lobbyists. And moving forward with the new contract for a new lobbyist or not, we'll ensure that provisions are in there that covers, addresses your concerns in the future.
We, you know, and I think this is, this leads to a larger, like, look at our contracts that have been with the same individuals or same companies. I think it's always very healthy to, you know, get additional looks at, especially if we've had somebody for a long time. I know that we saw this with our broker when I had first gotten elected, who, you know, I think got comfortable, which led to increases for our health insurance rates for our employees. And so I did want to note that, and I mentioned this to some staff, but part of that meeting with Treasurer Ma's office was the discussion of availability for both line items through the budget, which we've submitted, but also looking at the I-Bank program for financing. And, you know, their suggestion of either looking at it project by project, but also how we package things which would actually result in us saving a lot of money, but also opening up the door of opportunity for, for better projects and better financing and not always relying on our general fund dollars to be able to do these things. And so, outside of that, the Hike for Our Heroes hike, just wanted to say thank you to everybody that came up to that. It was pouring. At some point, there was thunder, but a solid, maybe 60, 70 people hiked the Brand Boulevard. It was part of our Week of Remembrance for the Armenian Genocide, and it was organized by a younger group known as Hike for Our Heroes. And then I know that there was a comment made just now as well on the chess, as well as when I brought up the Tathik and Bapik proposal from one of our constituents, Ms. Brooks. The, that would actually come out of the Public Arts Fund for the Tathik and Bapik, which has $15 million in there, if not more at this point, that's been sitting there. And so it's not funds that would qualify for the programs that you're speaking of. I recognize the dire need of our residents, especially when it comes to their utility rates and rents right now. That's the kind of, that's the fund that I was proposing that, that art piece come out from. And so I know you made comments publicly, so I just wanted to make sure I was addressing them publicly back to you. Thank you.
Back to Mr. Kazakian.
No, I could have gone at the end as well, but I'll just be very quick. I know that the forecast agenda had a number of items on there, and I apologize. I will be out of town next week. It is Water Week, and I will be traveling with members of the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California to Washington, DC as Vice Chair of their Legislative Affairs Committee, along with the Committee Chair and the Chair of the Board to represent Metropolitan Water District. Of course, always Glendale's interests in that as well. So I will be gone from Monday through Wednesday, and I apologize for that. There were a number of events this week that I wasn't able to get to. Earth Day, the ARS Dinner, and it's because my wife was traveling, which means when she's gone, I'm home with our son, and when I'm gone, she's home with the son. So we are playing that juggling of family responsibilities. Now, next week, it'll be my turn to be out of town, and I apologize for missing the meeting. I will try to explore ways where I can participate remotely if possible. Thank you.
Yeah, don't worry, Mr. Kazakian. We're going to take all the easy stuff next week and save the hard ones for your return. Because I know you'd like to be part of.
Put me in, Coach, I'm fine.
Councilmember Brahman?
Okay, I'll be quick. Two things for the new business agenda for next week. First is I would like us to consider some sponsorship, including a small financial contribution to the Pride event being organized by Glendale Out for June 7th in the Adams Hill Mini Park. My proposal would be up to $5,000 in financial support. So new business. The other one has to do with a shared mobility pilot program, something we've been discussing here on council for probably a good five years, maybe even longer, actually before I was even on council. So I think it's been more like six or seven years. I know that, and I'm not going to go through it, there's a, there's a history where we, I guess we went out for an RFP and then decided to cancel that RFP. And there've been discussions on and off about finding other ways to do a pilot that would at least test out the concept in Glendale. So I would like to get that back on our agenda so we can give direction to move forward in one direction or the other. So if we could put that on the new business calendar for next week. Sorry, Mr. Kazakian, you'll miss that, but if you have any, any input, maybe you can, I don't know, write it in or call it in or something like that. All right? That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, it was a very busy week, being the Week of Remembrance. I do want to call out all the organizers and co-chairs of the city's genocide event, and it was very well done. and it was very well done this year. I got, I heard many, many compliments, both on the, the format of the event, which basically was not many political speakers, and more focus on the culture and the music and the arts reflecting the genocide and the culture. So very good for that. We did have an Earth Day celebration on Saturday where we inaugurated one out of five of our new electric buses on the Beeline system. They're totally electric, and I think that if you keep an eye out, you'll see them buzzing around town, not making any engine noise to speak of, or producing any sort of particulates or greenhouse gases. So that is a great step towards cleaning the environment, and I know the council has been very much involved in that. And I, also with the initiative of Mr. Brotman, I know this was one of his favorite ideas, and we're slowly but surely getting there. The ARS event on Sunday was very well-attended. This is a group that's located in Glendale that provides humanitarian services, not just to the Armenian community, but to the entire Glendale community and outside the boundaries of Glendale as well. This is a nationwide organization that tries to do good for the communities. I would like to say that I will be making some changes in the future to the council format. I don't want to do, I don't want to start out of the bat, out of the gate doing those. I'm going to maybe let, let things settle down a little bit, and then I will be making some changes to the extent that I can. Councilmember Sotirian was correct, the issue of the video angles, which would usually be in the purview of the mayor, was voted on by the council last, when, last summer, I think we had our, in August, we had a workshop slash city council meeting. And so because it was a decision, as she stated, of the council, it can only be changed by a decision of the council and must be brought up for reconsideration by someone in the prevailing side.
That's correct. And it was, it was in, there was an initial discussion in the summer, but that decision was discussed in January of this year.
Right. So we will be dealing with some of those, that issue and others in the near future, next week, actually, when we talk about the decorum and how we run the council meetings, unless we want to wait until Mr. Kasakian gets back and throw that on his plate.
I'm happy to participate in that. I just won't be able to do it next week.
Thank you. Well, we'll, I'll consult with the city manager and see if an adjustment would be proper. And as the new mayor, I am not going to present you with a manifesto of what I'm going to be doing in the next year. My main desire is to make sure that the business of the city runs smoothly, that council members have a full and complete opportunity to state their opinions and to debate the issues, and the public as well is both informed of those issues and able to give us their input. And that really is my overriding concern as I start my year as mayor. So that's all I have. Does staff have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, let's move on to the next item.
Yes, the next item is community event announcements, three minutes, five speaker limit. Per mayor policy, this item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communications, subject to the three-minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. Mayor Najarian, we have five speaker cards on this item. The first one is Alan Durham.
Mayor Najarian, members of the council, good evening. I'm Alan Durham. The Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association is sponsoring a community meeting on wildfire preparedness on Thursday, May 8th at 7:00 PM at Brand Library. Speakers will include Police Chief Sid, interim Fire Chief Brooks, and City Madner, sorry, City Manager Galanian. Wildfire preparedness is obviously a timely topic. Our fire season is now year-round, and Cal Fire's new fire danger maps have expanded the number of properties in Glendale that are located in high fire-risk zones. Again, this community meeting will be Thursday, May 8th at 7:00 PM at Brand Library. Everybody is welcome to attend. Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Next is Susan Wolfson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and council members. I'm here tonight to announce, I think I sent a flyer, so hopefully it'll be able to be displayed. Friday, May 16th at the Alex Theater. Maybe not. Friday, May 16th at the Alex Theater, the Artsakh State Dance Ensemble will be performing a, it's a benefit performance that is being sponsored by the Armenia Fund, and I would like to encourage people to attend. I believe there are still tickets available. I checked yesterday. There's a wide range of price points. If they're unable to get the flyer up, which it appears may be the case as the time is tick, 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 ticking down, I will tell you that you can go to Ticket Micket. Don't get confused and go to Ticketmaster. Go to Ticket Micket. That is the online ordering site for tickets for this event, and I think it would be a wonderful evening out for families and others to enjoy a performance by this group who is courageously carrying on despite conditions in their homeland. There's a lot of things going on in the world that I am not happy about, and there's not much I can do about a lot of them. But this I can do. I can come and announce this event and show my support for these people, for these dancers. I'm not sure what the problem is exactly. I have it here on my phone. This is the email that I sent to the city clerk today with the flyer. Maybe, maybe if you can display it later on during the meeting, if some technical glitch that has occurred can be overcome by then, that would be really awesome, whether I'm here or not. Thank you.
If it, thank you for your announcement, and when it does become available, we will post it at the end of the meeting during the general public comment. Oh, better late than never. There we go. Okay, it's the Artsakh State Dance Ensemble, Friday, May 16th, 2025, at the Alex Theater, 7:00 PM. Get your tickets at Ticket Micket, not Ticketmaster. And it looks like it is going to be a very vibrant group of performers on that day. Okay, we'll go next.
Our next public speaker is Al Barley.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and council members. My name is Al Barley. I emailed you last week, and I'd like to read the email for the record. I am not Armenian, I'm Jewish. This is why I stand 100% with the Armenian community in its fight for recognition of the 1915 Armenian genocide. As I've done in past years, on April 21st, I drove an over an hour from my home in Cerritos to attend the ceremony commemorating the Armenian genocide that was sponsored by the city of Glendale. I also drove over an hour today. While I came in support, I left in complete disgust at the antisemitism exhibited at the ceremony. Poet Rafi Joe Wartanian equated the Armenian genocide with Israel's conduct in the war of, in the war on Gaza, and repeated the big lie that Israel's committing a genocide in Gaza. Not only is Israel not committing a genocide, Israel's doing the exact opposite of a genocide. Israel's preventing a second Holocaust. On October 7th, 2023, Hamas showed the world its plan to eradicate the Jewish people from their homeland. The work that the Israeli military is doing in Gaza is therefore the prevention of a second Holocaust. Not only has Hamas not apologized for the murderous rampage that it committed on October 7th, 2023, it is about to do it again and again until there are no more Jews left in the Jewish homeland. The Palestinian people themselves know that the Gaza genocide is a big lie. Earlier this month, they held a fancy ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate a new mole in Ramallah. This is inconsistent with being victims of a genocide. Only antisemites call Israel's, characterize Israel's self-defense operation Gaza as a genocide. While I understand that these days the Armenian community is not happy with Israel, especially with Israel supplying arms to Azerbaijan, that is by no excuse, there is no excuse to repeat antisemitism lies, antisemitic lies. I would like to assure the Glendale City Council that as a Jew, I am ashamed, ashamed, that the only Jewish state has yet to recognize the Armenian genocide. I hope that the Glendale City Council will issue an apology to the Jewish community and will take action to ensure that Rafi Joe Wartanian is never invited back to any future ceremony commemorating the Armenian genocide unless he issues an apology. In a few seconds I have left, I will say that I will continue to attend the Armenian genocide commemoration events, because my support for the Armenian community is any, is much bigger than any antisemitic poet or the city council's either unwillingness or inability to put a lid on it. In a few seconds, I also want to give some food for thought to Councilmember, Councilmember Sotirian. You were born in Yerevan, six and a half decades before the genocide. Can you even fathom a ribbon-cutting ceremony in 1915 in Yerevan while there's a genocide next door in the Ottoman Empire?
Thank you for joining us from Cerritos, Mr. Barley. Thank you. Next speaker.
Next is Carl Pavolitis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Carl Pavolitis, President Glendale Kiwanis Club, joined by immediate past president Irma Vegas and Renee Karapetian, and we're here to talk about a duck race. So Saturday, May 3rd, 11:30 or 11 o'clock in the morning, we have, this can't believe it, our 20th annual duck race that, and which is a fundraiser for the Glendale Kiwanis Club, all of which funds are reinvested back into our community to improve the lives of kids right here in, in Glendale. So this is an invitation to all of you to please come join us, if, to the community to come join us and bring your kids, because the kids just love the two lakes we set up and the ducks going down them. You can just, just see the smiling faces. We just have to keep them doing. And I got to tell you, if you, the ducks are still available for adoption, and they are available for $5 apiece, and the grand prize is $10,000. With that, Renee.
Oh, there's not much to add to this, except you see the QR code on the screen. If you pick out your phone and, and take a picture of your QR code, you can actually adopt the dogs. Right now, we still have some ducks available. It's only $5, as Carl mentioned. And please come Saturday, May 3rd, from 11:30 to 2:00. Thank you.
And I'd like to add that we are in 12 schools in the Glendale Unified School District with our service leadership programs, which was my presidential focus last year, and I'm really proud of the service that we get to do with the kids and how we get to teach them leadership through service. So this is a big community event. You'll see a lot of kids, a lot of our own Glendale Unified School District, and we're excited to have you there. Thank you.
As I said, you'll have an opportunity. There are game booths, those displays, lunch will be provided by the Seabee Valley Kiwanis Club. You can make a, a family day out of it. As I said, the event really is for the kids, and as I said, it's a lot of fun. I don't know if the video link made it through or not. No? Okay. Not, but as I said, it's, it's a great event, and as I said, you are, this is an invitation to you, Mr. Mayor, to all the council members. Please, please stop by and join us on, on Saturday for a few minutes or, or most of the event. If you want to come really early, we can put you to work setting up.
So, so chief. Bring your two-legged, but also bring your four-legged kids as well.
Buddy and I are coming.
Glad to see you.
So chief, you make a donation to Kiwanis, you get some ducks, rubber ducks. Each duck has a number on the bottom.
That's correct.
And they're all, start swimming in the top lake.
We will, we will be racing 20,000 of them.
And there's a sluice that's, that's pulled, and they rush down the channel, and several ducks, or just one maybe, is picked up at the bottom, and that is the prize winner, and here you go.
So, so in order to raise 20,000 ducks, we do it in heats. So we have about five heats. So the winning, the winning ducks are being heated collectively, and then we do a race. So, and then the, then the winning duck from there is grabbed, and one is worth 10,000, one will be worth 1,000, one will be worth 500. Now, if you got that.
We can, we can play the video now.
Let's, let's play it.
This May, get ready for a splashing good time at the most adorable event of the year. Join us for the annual Kiwanis Incredible Duck Splash event. It's where excitement meets compassion in the rubber duck race for kids. It's more than just a race, it's a chance to make a difference in the lives of children in need. Every duck adopted goes towards providing essentials like education, healthcare, and shelter for those who need it most. So mark your calendars and join us for a day filled with laughter, love, and lots of quacky fun. Come join us and let's make a difference together.
So, so it'll be Saturday, May 3rd at 11 o'clock.
Saturday, May 3rd, that's this Saturday.
This Saturday.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck to you.
President Trump's sweeping new tariffs have shocked the stock market.
Next speaker.
The last public speaker is Tony Passerella.
Good evening, council and staff, Tony Passerella. You know, I don't know what you think of me, but at least I'm engaged, and that's in City Affairs, and that's more than I can say for 99% of the residents in Glendale. I've lived here for 38 years. This is my home, and I care very much about this city. Just like you, Mr. Kasakian, Fremont Park's going to be amazing. Mr. Kasakian, I believe that when you said in your outgoing message that you loved the city, and I want to like you, and you know that, but you make it really hard. Mr. Garpetian, I support you 100%. I voted for you, but we're not always going to agree on everything, are we? Mr. Brotman, you believe in climate change. I totally disagree with that, but I do support the gas-powered leaf blower ban. Listen, I don't think you are horrible, evil people, any of you, and I don't disagree with all your decisions. I mean, we have excellent leadership in our police force, in our fire department. I witnessed firsthand Pacific Community Center, being a coach there, how our community, community service in parks operates. I don't agree with everything that you do, but I'm passionate in my response. Politics can get messy sometime. That brings me to you, Mr. Najarian. That stunt you pulled two weeks ago, making that backroom deal with the mayoral selection and coming in with a prepared speech was shamefully pitiful. A total, complete capitulation, throwing Mr. Garpetian under the bus. I mean, you, you supported GUSD parents when they were warring against the school board with questionable curriculum. You came to Alex Belakian and Jordan Henry's after-party in the next election cycle. You were our Superman. I supported you, as many others did, when you got couped last April in the mayoral selection process. But our Superman revealed his true colors two weeks ago with that capitulation, showing the whole city, Susie. I got who you really are, Lex Luthor. You've always been that.
Can we save that picture? I kind of like that. Next speaker, please.
That was the last speaker.
Okay, that will close this portion of oral communications. Let's move to the next item.
Next are action items. Action item A, human resources regarding signed letter agreement. Action item A, Human Resources Regarding Side Letter Agreement with Glendale Firefighters Association Pertaining to Staff Captain Pay. One motion approving side letter agreement between the city and GFBA, modifying language in the GFBA memorandum of understanding effective July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027, to clarify intent of Staff Captain Pay.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, Member City Council. As you know, City of Glendale is a contracting agency of the California Public Employees Retirement System, commonly known as CALPERS, and is subject to their statutory and regulatory requirements that governing full compensation for pension calculation purposes. On April 4 of last year, CALPERS determined that the compensation paid as Staff Captain Pay was not compliant under the Public Employment Retirement Law for a retiring fire captain. The city submitted an appeal on behalf of the retiring fire captain on June 6 of 2024. After working with CALPERS, the determination was rescinded. However, the item is still not in compliance and not able to be used in pension calculations until the MOU language is revised and additional payments are made to Staff Captain paramedics. Hence, staff recommends to approve a side letter agreement between the city and Glendale Firefighters Association with a fully loaded cost of $43,377. If you have any questions or would like additional detailed information, Paula Adams, our Chief Human Resources Officer, is available.
We do have a public speaker, so let's take that first.
We do have one public speaker.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Mulano. For a period of about 18 months, I was a member of the Blue Ribbon Committee concerning the city's pensions. And one of the final recommendations by this commission or this committee was that there be transparency and open discussions of the memorandum of understanding, the agreements that the city makes with the city employees. Oftentimes, when I have presented this again to the city council, the request was basically ignored. It has been ignored overall. I think that we need more transparency when it comes to the MOU, and that includes any adjustments that are being made to the memorandum of understanding. And the reason is very simple. Many of these additional payments that are being made or corrections made to their salaries would have a long-term impact once these employees begin their expected 30-year retirement. And I figured that we ought to know the full cost of all of these changes as it may go into the future. And the reason is that the pension system is impacting the city's finances significantly. So if I were to take the first, the average of the first five years between 2000 and 2004, we were paying CALPERS altogether on an average of about $5 million a year. Those were the distributions that were being made. Today is 78 million. Had this change has been adjusted for inflation, there would have been roughly another 60% to 80% over the $5 million, basically around $9 million. That's what we should have been paid if adjusted for inflation. But that's not the case today, and it is impacting everything concerning the city's general fund and other funds as well. The problem that I have additionally with these particular changes is that there is no corresponding performance issues, specifically as it pertains to cardiac arrest. The effectiveness of cardiac arrest in Glendale by the Glendale Fire Department paramedics is less than 10%. In some of the data that I looked at, it was less than 5. The best cities that could serve as an example, the city of Seattle, in their performance rate is 60% survivability. So on the one hand, we have these increases in pay and benefits, and on the other hand, we do not have an evaluation on performance. I am recommending that the city absolutely know the full cost of all of these adjustments and also to move towards more transparency on the MOU, make the MOU process involve the public, and then create performance measures for the fire department.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
No, that is all.
Okay. Are there any questions from council, from Mr. Galanian or Ms. Adams about the process?
I'll move.
Your second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Let's take roll call.
Council members Asatirian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next is action item B, Glendale Water and Power Regarding Grayson Repowering Project, Southern California Gas Company Phase II Collectible Work Authorization Agreements. One motion authorizing the city manager or his designee to enter into and execute Phase II CWA agreements is necessary with SoCal Gas for the upgrade of SoCal Gas facilities located within the Glendale Water and Power Utility Operations Center and in connection with Grayson Repowering Project in the aggregate not to exceed amount of $4,109,042. The form of said agreement shall be subject to the approval of the city attorney.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, Member City Council. I'll just turn it over to Rome Chetin, our senior mechanical engineer, to present this item for your consideration.
I think it's on now. Thank you. Rustam Chetin, senior mechanical engineer, Glendale Water and Power, here to present the Grayson Repowering Project.
Can you speak up a little bit more?
Sure. Rustam.
Sure. Thank you. The Grayson Repowering Project, Southern California Gas Company Phase II Collectible Work Authorization Agreements presentation. For background, Southern California Gas Company, or SoCal Gas for short, has two facilities, a north and south, located within the GDP utility operations center. That meter natural gas, it transports under contract with the city for the Grayson Power Plant, and we have a few photos to show that. On the bottom left is the photo of the south metering station. Next to it is the north metering station, and in the top right, it shows you kind of where they're located within the site. And that photo was taken while Grayson was under demolition. On December 13, 2022, and in connection with the Grayson Repowering Project, city council authorized a Phase I Collectible Work Authorization, or CWA for short, with SoCal Gas for services related to the improvement and upgrade of their facilities. To improve overall site flexibility and plant availability, GDP had planned to redesign the south metering station to supply gas to existing Unit 9 and upgrade the north to supply gas to the new Ortsilla units. The Phase I CWA, SoCal Gas, had completed the following. They decommissioned, remediated, and removed unused meters, piping, valves, and regulators that were used to supply gas to the now-removed units 1 through 8. They conducted engineering research and analysis, and they prepared preliminary design documents, a schedule, and a classified cost estimate for the Phase II work based on GDP's plans. A classified cost estimate technically refers to a rougher or magnitude estimate. SoCal Gas's estimate was based upon the preliminary design, equipment quotations, and their received, that they received, and their experience from similar projects. The classified cost estimate is $4,109,042. To reduce this cost, GDP has decided to reduce SoCal Gas's scope of work by revising its plans and have both Unit 9 and the Ortsilla units be supplied gas from an existing single, from a single existing meter located in the north metering station. Current status. SoCal Gas's revised scope of work currently includes the following: existing meter modifications, moving the proposed new gas chromatograph from the south to the north metering station, removing no longer needed pressure regulators, and repairing, replacing existing communication equipment. A final revised scope of work and cost estimate are still being developed and negotiated with SoCal Gas. Phase I CWA funds have been expended, requiring additional funds to pay for any cancellation costs and to complete the revised Phase II work. Under recommendations, GDP is recommending that city council authorize Phase II CWA agreements with SoCal Gas for an aggregate not to exceed amount of $4,109,042. Phase II CWA work will include the balance of engineering and material procurement, permitting, project and construction management, remediation, construction, and commissioning. Multiple CWAs could reduce the overall cost given how SoCal Gas allocates their overheads. GDP believes that the final revised scope of work and cost for the Phase II work will be less than the classified cost estimate for the original plan. Funds are available in the fiscal year 2024-2025 approved budget. And with that concludes my presentation, and happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Brotman, you look like you're on the verge of a question.
I asked most of my questions in the briefing. One of the things that I heard was, and this is all very technical, and I could not really fully wrap my head around it, but what I understood is that staff believes they can bring this cost down pretty significantly. I heard a number of $2 million, maybe you didn't really intend for that to slip out of your mouth instead of the $4 million. My question was, why are we having to approve this larger amount if you think you can get it down? Maybe you can address that. At the very least, I would like to make sure that you come back once you've settled this contract cost, and you tell us, you know, where it ended up, because I think what I'm hearing is, for reasons you will explain, we need to approve this larger amount, but you'll be working to bring that down pretty substantially. So maybe you could address that.
Yes. Good evening, council. Scott Mellon, acting general manager, Glendale Water and Power. Yes, in the conversations we had, we do think we can bring the overall cost down. We're discussing a reduced scope, maybe a slightly better or modified design that we think will cut the cost down. The $2 million was a general conversational point, but yes, we think it's possible to get down that point. The reason why we need to request funds up to this amount is the quote that we received from SoCal Gas. They are not permitted to proceed until they know that funding is available. So this was the quote that we received from them, so that meets the need. So as long as we have the funds under our purview, they can proceed in moving through the CWA II, the Phase II.
Okay, so we approve the funds, you go off and you work on the design, scope of work, whatever terminology is appropriate.
Right.
At what point will you come back and tell us what this is ultimately going to cost us?
I think we can probably do it as soon as the design is finalized. We can do a note and file to council if you'd like that.
Yes, I would like that.
Okay.
I would as well.
Okay, you heard it. So we'll wait, do your value engineering and your, whatever the term is, and we'll await your end results on that.
Okay.
Mr. Garpetian.
Couple of quick questions. The amount of gas, the flow rate of the gas that we're purchasing, is it for the three new engines and the engine number nine? What is it for?
The current design has to consider flows to both Unit 9 separate unit and the three Ortsilla units. So yes, it will accommodate all four units essentially.
And is it to their maximum capacity? Because I know we kind of shot ourselves on the foot by obtaining only 14% ARB permit that we can use to only 14% capacity. And correct me if I'm wrong, because this is very complicated in general, but is it to that 14% capacity or to the maximum capacity of the new Ortsilla engines?
The design is going to be to accommodate the natural gas flows at full capacity output for all four units at one time, plus some additional header, I guess is the right way to say it, some additional adder on to that.
So if a miracle happens in the future and you, you know, you're able to add one, two, maybe three engines to the facility, would you have enough flow to maintain all these new engines as well?
When and if that were to happen, we could make accommodations on the piping to accommodate those additional units. It wouldn't restrict the amount of flow that we have coming to the site. That pipe is much larger. It's just how we distribute from there once it comes past the meter.
Right. And I think what my questions are, maybe, maybe I'm asking, thank you, I don't have any more questions. I think what I would like to have for us is, have we purchased all of our engines or the battery storage?
We have purchased all three engines. In fact, they're all three sitting in Long Beach as of yesterday.
How about the battery?
The batteries, we are in the process of purchasing. We have not bought them yet. We're working on several different styles of negotiation with the battery provider, because as you all know, there are some significant issues with tariffs. So we're trying to figure out how we're going to manage tariffs, and I'll be coming back to council likely sometime towards the end of June to discuss those possibilities with you anyways.
Okay, because we already issued the bonds to purchase the equipment and the improvements for the facility, and we have another one coming, right? We have one more bond to issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mellon, as you know, that's not part of this item, so we will schedule briefings if you have questions that.
I would like to, I understand and I appreciate that, because it all comes together sometimes, you know, in your mind, and maybe I ask questions that is not part of the agenda, but it's related to what we're doing here today. I would like to ask to agenda as an item to get a report, for the public to know as well, as to what are we doing, when are we completing this, you know, purchases of all the equipment, when the project is going to be approved, and when it's done, what kind of a power supply we are going to have? Because these bonds, I can't, my generation cannot pay for it, my children's generation cannot pay for it, my grandchildren's cannot, cannot, I cannot pay and finish it. So I think it's important to know, the public to know, what kind of facility are we getting after spending, I don't know, 500 to 700 million dollars? The numbers vary, of course. So I'm asking for this item to be agendized, if it has to come back next week for us to...
Councilmember Garpetian, we can certainly put it on a new business item, agenda item for next week.
I appreciate that. Can we just do it as an update on the project, which we've already decided on? I mean, I don't think we need to, we need to go through the whole, put it on the agenda.
Mayor Najarian, depends on the nature of the update. Council would like to see if it's just merely an update on the status of the batteries and the engines and generally the status of the construction of the Grayson Repowering. We can just make a presentation. We don't need to agendize.
Let me do this. Let me invite council member Garpetian to speak with you, and you get an understanding about exactly what he's looking for. And if it does fit in an update, it doesn't need the full agendizing, then we'll do that. If it does need that new agendizing, then we'll, I'll invite him to bring it forward next week.
Sounds good.
By update, you mean having a report here, an updated report here? I'll be okay too. I mean, that's fine, as long as we can tell a summary of what's going on. They're asking me, I don't have all the information for the public.
Yeah, Mayor and council member Garpetian, we can provide a, make a presentation. Mr. Mellon will make a presentation. We will not be able to take direction from council. Okay, then we'll see when we can bring it forward with updated information.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Najarian, councilmembers, I do have a card for this item.
Let me recognize Councilmember Asaturian and then we'll go to the card.
Given that we have one more bond to issue and about the I-Bank program that we just learned about, is there a way that you can, is it too late? Have we passed, is there an opportunity for us to look at different financing opportunities or we're already bound by issuing?
No, we just started the bond issuance process, so we're putting together our POS, the preliminary operational summary, our official summary, so we're still working on that. You mentioned I-Bank, we've already started looking at that possibly. It does have limits, as we understand it's limited to $65 million is the cap. And the rates that we saw were on par or just slightly higher than what we were seeing with bonds. So I don't know if there's a significant benefit in focusing on that for this particular need, for needs, but we can, we definitely use it for other options.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. City Clerk, let's have the speaker.
Beth Brooks, you have three minutes.
Yeah, I'm very ignorant about this whole project. It's all just very complicated to me, but you know, a few things. Number one, looking at the item, once again, if you could get the, whoever's writing up the agendas to make it more friendly, that people even understand what the agenda item is. Number two, because I did listen to, the Department of Water and Power had a, I guess, a commission meeting about the tariffs and things would be, you know, much more expensive and they wanted to come back to city council and ask for more money. Does the Department of Water and Power have profits? Like, I don't know how that works. I know they don't have profits. No, it's not like Harvard has $52 billion in an endowment and they sit there, but they ask you to pay tuition. It's not like that. It's like, they don't have profits that they can pull from. So that's my question really, like, all the money that they get from the consumer, from the customers goes to just keep it running? There's never a profit?
I think he's a good question.
Yeah, I know, it's like a budget, I don't really know how this, you know, I'm just wondering, because when I think of Harvard, I think of, wait a second, how does that, how does that work? You're sitting on money, but you're asking for money. So I know that's probably an ignorant question, but I, you know, I really have no clue, obviously, on how the budget works and also, I mean, I'm glad you told me about the money, you know, with the chess, which of course leads me to say, the budget hands out money and then finds ways to spend it. You know, like you hand out money and they say, now we got to find ways to spend this money for the Arts Council, so we'll throw here and throw there and throw there, as opposed to saying, maybe they don't need $15 million, maybe they need five. I know he's shaking his head. Maybe they need five, take $10 million and give it to my, you know, neighbor who's sleeping on the couch. Anyway, that's it. That's my comment on this item.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes.
What, how would you recommend, it's a big question. It's simple, but there's a lot to it.
There is a lot to it.
How would you recommend we get that information to Ms. Brooks and members of the public that have the same question?
Mayor Najarian, member of city council, I would recommend to wait until our budget study sessions. This year, we will have a brief introduction to how city budget generally works. And more specific to GWP, I would say during the second budget study session, during the departmental presentation, that be the appropriate time to respond to that question.
Okay, so that, we're going to invite you to our study sessions, Ms. Brooks, and we're going to get into it very, probably more information than you would want, but that's what council does in preparing the budget. And we will, we do have questions. We do take questions from the public during those meetings. Thank you. Is there any other comment on this item? Mr. City Clerk, any other cards?
Mayor Najarian, we don't have any callers or cards for this item anyway.
Okay, so we're on item eight B. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Moved, Kasakian and Bratman. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asaturian.
Upstate.
Bratman.
Yes.
Garbetchian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Next item, please, eight C.
HC Libraries Arts and Culture Regarding Dispense with Competitive Bidding for Integrated Library System Services. One resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize a deputy director of finance purchasing to issue a service authorization to Innovative Interfaces Incorporated for integrating, integrated library system services in a not to exceed amount of $104,675.50 for one year.
Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Najarian, member of city council, the Glendale library has been using Innovative Interfaces Incorporated for Integrated Library System Services for the last 10 years. Industry standard is to change ILS platforms at least every 10 years. Some libraries keep them for longer. The library arts and culture department is requesting to dispense with competitive bidding for these services for one year to be able to issue a new request for proposals that will come before council by June 30th of 2026, next year. The cost of $100,000 will be included in the upcoming proposed fiscal year 25, 26 budget. If you'd like more details or have any question, Lesa Palayo Lozado, Director of Library Arts and Culture, is available to respond.
Thank you, councilmembers. Any questions on this item?
None for me.
Are there any callers or cards?
Mayor Najarian, no cards or callers at this time.
I'll move the item.
Moved by Asaturian?
Second.
Okay, let's take roll call.
Councilmember Asaturian.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Garbetchian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
And Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Eight D, please.
Public Works Regarding Agreement for Compressed Natural Gas, CNG, Fueling Station Operations and Maintenance, Renewable Natural Gas, RNG, Procurement and Management, Credits, Administration and Replacement of CNG Fueling Station Equipment. One resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager or designate to execute an agreement subject to approval as to form by the city attorney with clean energy fuels for CNG fueling station operations and maintenance, RNG procurement and management, credits administration and installation of replacement CNG fueling station equipment. Two resolution of appropriation of $2,540,400 in Measure M Local Return Funds for the replacement of fueling station equipment.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, member of city council, the city has contracts with clean energy fuels to provide CNG fueling station for our transit refuse and remaining fleet of CNG vehicles. We've had this contract in place for 15 years and with an additional five-year term. Rather than extend the existing agreement, staff proposes establishing a new agreement incorporating new equipment and terms more favorable to the city. The new agreement will have provisions to share new credits, including low carbon fuel standards and renewable identification number. Therefore, staff is requesting that city council dispense with competitive bidding to execute a new agreement accepting clean energy proposals, clean energies proposals for station upgrade, operations, maintenance, RNG and general fueling services with the cost paid out of Measure M Local Return Fund. If you'd like additional information or if there is anything I missed, Ms. DeAndrea is available to respond to your questions as well.
Thank you. Any questions on council? Mr. Garbetchian.
How many vehicles do we have that operate on CNG?
We have, I'm sorry, we have...
108. 108, and these are large trucks, small trucks, trash trucks, am I correct? And the buses, some of them are buses?
Forty-four B-line transit buses.
108?
Yeah, so 44 buses, 54 public works vehicles, which include refuse and street sweepers, and 10 GWP trucks.
And this, are we completely changing from CNG to RNG? Or portion of it is changing because we want to get all the credits? Because with the renewable, we get more credits from the state that we're not getting today?
Correct. Actually, right now, we are consuming RNG, not CNG. Clean energy is providing RNG, but they are the ones that are receiving the credits today because they are the station owner.
So all of our equipment, all of our trucks and buses that are working on RNG?
Correct.
Oh, I thought it were on CNG, so I learned something new today. And the equipments that we have today is, with this contract, I want to understand, what are we changing to get those credits? Is it the equipment that is being replaced?
Yes, so in order to receive the credits, you need to own the station. We, in 2008, we entered into an agreement with Clean Energy for a turnkey operation and they are the owners and remain the owners of the station. So in order for us to have better terms, we need to purchase and replace the existing equipment, which is at its useful life anyways. So that's what we're asking tonight to...
And how many stations do we have that we are replacing the equipment?
It's one CNG station and it's located in the B-line facility and it serves the B-line buses as well as a public station where our refuse trucks and our GWP trucks fuel.
But you said just CNG station. It's a CNG or RNG?
We call it a CNG, it's, but...
It's an RNG.
But it's RNG.
It started with CNG.
Oh, it's an RNG, okay.
Yes.
I'm trying to put all the pieces together. So all of our trucks are being fueled from one station?
Correct.
Okay. So we're changing the equipment to get more credits, to own the equipment to get more credits from the state?
Correct.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any calls or cards?
No.
Mr. Bratman?
No, I was gonna, I mean, I had a lot of questions, but I got them all answered in the briefing, so at this point, I'll just move the item.
That's appropriate.
One last question, I'm sorry. What is the difference between RNG and CNG? I know RNG is renewable natural gas, but what is the difference? Where is the renewable part comes?
So the slide up here, so it's organic waste and so they take organic waste and they put it in a digester and they're able to process the waste and capture the biogas and then it's upgraded, it's cleaned, purified, and then that is injected into the local pipeline.
And I see a couple of cows in that picture.
Yes, a lot of dairy farms.
A lot of dairy farms.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Let's take roll call.
Councilmembers Asaturian.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Garbetchian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Let's go to the next item, please.
The next item is hearings. Item A, Public Works Regarding Speed Safety System Pilot Program, Assembly Bill 645. One motion to approve and adopt a speed safety system use policy and impact report.
Since it's a hearing, I will open the hearing and go to Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, member of city council, I'm going to turn it over to Pastor Casanova, our principal traffic engineer for the presentation, and he has a contingent of engineers with him to respond to questions you may have.
Mr. Casanova.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian, and good evening, Mayor Najarian and members of the city council. My name is Pastor Casanova, as mentioned, I'm the principal traffic engineer in Public Works, and I'll be giving a presentation here tonight regarding Assembly Bill 645, Speed Safety System Pilot Program. We'll start with history of prior legislation that laid the foundation for Assembly Bill 645. Assembly Bill 2363 that was authored by Assemblywoman, now Congresswoman Laura Friedman, required the California State Transportation Agency, known as CalSta, to establish a Zero Traffic Fatalities Task Force. The task force conducted various international and domestic studies and issued their findings in a January 1st, 2020 report. The findings concluded that speed safety systems are an effective and countermeasure to address speeding and enforcing speed limits using speed safety systems on streets where drivers create dangerous roadway environments is a reliable and cost-effective means to prevent further roadway fatalities and injuries. Assembly Bill 2363 laid the foundation for the new Assembly Bill AB 645 that we're here to discuss tonight. In tonight's presentation, I'll be referring to the Assembly Bill as AB 645. This bill was authored again by Congresswoman Laura Friedman and prior Assembly Member Phil Tang and outlines legislation to authorize a speed safety system pilot program for six designated cities in California, including Glendale, Los Angeles and Long Beach in Southern California and San Jose, Oakland and city and county of San Francisco in Northern California. AB 645 was signed into law by the governor on October 13th, 2023. The primary objective of the program is to reduce speed-related traffic collisions and injuries and improve overall street safety. Other cities with similar programs have shown positive results and impacts with the deployment of such systems. In New York, for example, speeding decreased by 73% and injuries went down by 35%. Chicago and Portland experienced similar decreases in crashes. The technical definition of a speed safety system is a fixed or mobile radar or laser system or any other electronic device that utilizes automated equipment to detect a violation of speed laws and obtain a clear photograph of a speeding vehicle's license plates. In practical terms, it's an automated speed enforcement camera that captures a picture of the rear license plate of a vehicle and issues a violation to the registered owner of the vehicle. An example is shown in the rightmost picture. This is a graphical flow chart to summarize the process from initial, from the initial capturing of the picture to the secure transfer of the information to the back office review of the data and information, a city review process occurs and then the citation is mailed. The speeding violation notices would equate to a fine for the violations and are very similar to a parking ticket. The programs would include a 60-day grace period where warning notices would be issued for speed violations. After the 60-day, no, after the 60-day warning period, the penalties for the violations will range from $50 to $500 based on the speed of the vehicle traveling over the speed limit. The program also includes a process for contesting violations as well as a diversion program for indigent violation recipients to perform community service, pay via installments or reduce the amount of the fine. The revenue generated from the speed violations may be used to recover the cost of the program and any excess revenue may only be used for implementation of traffic calming measures on the respective streets that are chosen for the program. Any unused revenue at the end of the program would go to the state of California for use in the state's active transportation program. To move forward with the AB 645 program, two documents are required to be adopted by the city council. First, the speed safety system use policy and the impact report. The use policy defines the type of data and information that's being collected, who has access, and how the privacy rights will be maintained and data protected. The use policy includes provisions for protecting data from unauthorized access, data retention policies, public access, third-party sharing, training, auditing and oversight. AB 645 requires that the use policy be made available to the public at least 30 days prior to adoption by the city council and the policy was posted for public review on March 15th, 2025. A few of the key elements of the use policy that address privacy protection are listed here. Information that is collected can only be used for the program and cannot be disclosed to any other persons, state or federal agencies... to any other persons, state, or federal agencies for any other purposes aside from those required by law, court order, or subpoenas in individual cases and proceedings. There are also several data retention policies outlined. For example, photographic evidence that is obtained that is not used to issue a violation needs to be destroyed within five business days, confidential records destroyed within 60 days, and administrative records after 120 days. AB 645 also requires that a vehicle's first violation for traveling 11 to 15 miles per hour over the posted speed limit must be a warning notice. Therefore, some of the nonconfidential data may be kept for up to three years in order to identify vehicles that may qualify for the warning notice. The second document required for the AB 645 program is the Speed Safety Impact Report. The report includes the proposed speed enforcement camera locations, respective traffic data supporting the recommendations and description of the system. The impact report also includes an assessment of potential impacts of the program on public civil rights and liberties and plans to safeguard those rights. AB 645 requires that the impact report may be available for public review, again, at least 30 days prior to adoption by the City Council, and the policy was posted together with the use policy for public review on March 15, 2025. The method for selecting the proposed speed enforcement camera locations are outlined in the impact report and include a qualitative and quantitative citywide analysis of the city's high-injury collision streets, proximity-to-school zones, streets with documented speeding issues, as well as socioeconomic and geographic considerations. The locations were narrowed down to 16 recommended locations based on the frequency and severity of the speed-related crashes, speeding citations, and recommendations from law enforcement. The citywide analysis initially resulted in 16 streets that qualified for consideration. These 16 locations were included on the project website during the outreach efforts and included an interactive map to allow the public to comment and help prioritize the 16 locations. The 16 locations were ultimately fine-tuned down to nine recommended locations that comply with the quantity of systems that are allowed by AB 645. AB 645 requires that speed enforcement cameras be placed in locations within the city that are geographically and socio-economically diverse. The areas in blue on both graphics A and B depict the proposed speed enforcement camera locations north of the 134 freeway, and there are five systems proposed north of the freeway. The areas in pink on graphic A depict locations south of the 134 freeway, and there are four locations proposed south of the 144 freeway. As seen on the graphics, the nine locations recommended on the impact report provide geographic and socioeconomic balance and diversity as stated in the bill. This map shows the proposed speed safety system locations numbered 1 through 9, and also show the proximity of school zones shown in magenta color. We can see from the map that many schools are in close proximity of the proposed speed safety systems. This is a list of the proposed streets on the left. On the right are results of the socioeconomic analysis of the proposed locations that included a review of socioeconomic characteristics for streets where the cameras are proposed and compared to the socioeconomic characteristics for the overall city of Glendale averages. The findings showed that the city socioeconomic characteristics of the proposed locations are proportionate to those of the city of Glendale averages, and this data was sourced from the American Community Survey, five-year estimates for 2022. Community engagement efforts began from October 2024 to present and included community meetings, an interactive project website, and an online survey. There were over 5,300 touchpoints since the beginning of the outreach and included information sent to over 400 stakeholders. Here's a more detailed view of the outreach. There were two community meetings that included translation in Spanish, Korean, and Armenian. The project website included estimated project timelines, frequently asked questions, a project fact sheet, and links to the meeting presentations. An online survey was available on the website, and we received 450 completed surveys. Of those surveys, here are the survey results. 87% of the respondents are Glendale residents, 80% drive or carpool, and 83% strongly support or somewhat support the program. The key takeaway here is that most of the respondents are Glendale residents that drive on the streets where the speed enforcement cameras are proposed, yet still support the The Transportation and Parking Commission recommended the adoption of the impact report and the use policy on February 24, 2025. The Commission also recommended that staff revisit the 16 initial locations and prioritize collisions over any other metric used. After revisiting the initial 16 locations, staff found that six of the nine originally recommended locations still remained on the list. However, after considering the other requirements of AB 645, staff reaffirms that the originally recommended nine locations are the most effective for deployment of the systems. And staff would also like to note that the camera locations will be studied within the first 18 months of the program if they were to move forward and be installed, and those, it would have to be confirmed that those systems are actually lowering speeds. If relocation is necessary, the remaining seven locations of the expansive 16 original locations can be considered. And there are two contract types allowed by AB 645 in moving forward to implementation phase, a leased system and an owned system. Each have pros and cons. Generally, leased options provide lower upfront costs and include maintenance, operation, and technical support. While the owned system provides for more agency control over the equipment and operations, they have a higher initial installation cost and ongoing responsibility for maintenance, repair, and operations. As noted previously, we're here today to seek adoption of the use policy and the impact reports. However, staff prepared a few slides with estimated cost for three potential contract options for reference. These estimates do not include potential cost offsets from the citation revenue or existing staff resources that may be diverted to this program. The estimates strictly show the estimated direct cost of the program. The first slide provide, this first slide provides estimates for a lease option with the city of Glendale issuing a new request for proposal and selecting a vendor. Item 1 outlines the estimated staff resource cost. Item 2 lists the estimated vendor cost for a design, build, operate, and maintain option for one year, and item 3 lists other minor direct costs. The total estimated annual cost for this option is $1 million per year, and the total estimated five-year contract amount for the services outlined in item number 2 for this option is approximately $3 million. In this next option, this estimate provides, provided in this slide, is based on the San Francisco MTA recently awarded contract. There is an estimated reduction in cost for this contract option and is based on the 33 system locations that are authorized in San Francisco, which may offer a cost savings if it were to be used by city of Glendale. Items number 1 and 3 on the list are the same as on the previous slide. Item number 2, that includes the vendor design, build, operate, and maintain costs, shows a reduction in cost over the prior option. The total estimated annual cost for this option is $840,000 a year, and with a total estimated five-year contract amount for the services at item number 2 of approximately $2.2 million. And in this final slide, it provides estimates for the cost of a city-owned system. There's an increased cost for staff resources outlined in item number 1 that account for additional resources required to administer a city-owned system, and city operations and maintenance costs for camera equipment are included in item number 2, and the vendor scope of work and services for that cost item are reduced. There is a one-time cost for installation of the poles, cameras, camera systems, electrical services, and conduits that are estimated at $1.2 million and are shown in item number 4. If existing infrastructure, such as use of existing streetlights can be used, the one-time installation cost may be reduced. The total annual estimated cost is $755,000 per year for this option, not including the $1.2 million one-time infrastructure installation cost. So in summary, the AB 645 Speed Safety System is a five-year pilot program. It authorizes nine speed safety system locations in Glendale. In order to move forward with the program, the City Council would have to adopt, approve and adopt the use policy and the impact reports, and therefore, staff is here today to respectfully request the City Council to adopt the speed safety system use policy and impact reports. Should those reports be approved and adopted by the council, the next steps would include confirming the funding source or sources, vendor selection through an RFP, construction, and finally, program implementation. And with that, we will take questions. We also have the consultant that assisted in the preparation of the use policies and impact reports here. Should there be any detailed questions?
Okay, thank you. I think we have three cards. Let's start with the speakers, and then council will have a chance to get them all.
The first speaker is Brett Slogan-Hop. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Brett Slogan-Hop, and I am representing Streets Are For Everyone. I want to thank Mayor Najarian and members of the council for the opportunity to speak. As an organization dedicated to reducing traffic fatalities to zero, SAFE strongly supports Glendale's efforts to implement AB 645 Speed Safety System Pilot Program, but we also urge you to accelerate this lifesaving initiative now. SAFE takes a holistic approach to street safety through education, awareness campaigns, policy advocacy, et cetera. Our work across LA County has shown that speed is consistently the deadliest factor in traffic crashes. According to California Office of Traffic Safety Data, Glendale ranks 15th out of 59 comparable cities for speed-related crashes. And most concerning, Glendale ranked worst among these cities for crashes involving pedestrians over the age of 65, truly highlighting the urgent need to protect our most vulnerable road users. When a pedestrian is hit by a car at 20 miles per hour, they have a 90% chance of survival. At 40 miles per hour, those odds plummet to 10%. SAFE has supported AB 645 since its inception because we've seen the effectiveness of speed safety systems across the country. We're asking Glendale officials to ensure that provided regular transparent updates on implementation progress, commit to activating cameras as quickly as possible, focusing on locations with high pedestrian traffic, especially near schools and senior centers, as was mentioned earlier, and ensure the program includes a robust public education and awareness campaigns. Additionally, sharing data openly so organizations like SAFE can help measure effectiveness as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Alec Bartrusev.
Good evening. My name is Alec Bartrusev, Glendale resident, also Commissioner on the City's Transportation and Parking Commission. I just want to applaud the city's efforts in advancing this project and hoping that you will support it. We have seen, I've been involved in the advisory committee for the bicycle master plan, the pedestrian master plan, the Vision Zero Plan, the local road safety program, plan, and what we've seen consistently throughout these programs and plans is that speed is the number one issue that addresses, that contributes to traffic collisions in our city, whether it's car-on-bike, car-on-pedestrian, car-on-car. Speed is the number one contributing factor to crashes and also to killed and severely injured collisions. So I support this program 100%. It is a pilot, so I'm sure that we're going to learn a lot from it. But as the FHWA has said and others have said, this is a five-star program that has proven its effectiveness throughout the nation. So I know that there's, there may be some hesitancy to adopt something that's considered a pilot here in the state, but we have the data to back the efficacy and validity of programs like this. So thank you for doing this. This is the number one most effective thing we can do as a city council to address traffic safety problems, and it's long overdue. So thank you.
Thank you.
Our final public speaker is Herbert Mulano.
Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Mulano. I agree with the prior speakers with regard to the history that Glendale has had with regard to pedestrian vehicular collisions. It is one of the numbers that I have made many presentations before the City Council. We average between 110 to 120 pedestrian collisions per year, and several studies have been done or attempts at reducing the collisions. But what I have not seen is a proper analysis of the data. I don't think we have done it. We don't know whether it's in the mornings and it's in the evenings, the type of driver, the type of that is actually causing the problem, or the type of pedestrian that's receiving it, whether it's at intersections or between intersections, the type of automobile. All of these things are relevant for a proper study of what is really causing the notoriety of Glendale being a very dangerous place for pedestrians and cyclists. But what I am concerned is about the possibility that this may turn out to be another red light camera-type program, a program that comes in with a supposedly beneficial impact but may not necessarily have that outcome. And I am particularly concerned about the issues, if you were to do the research with regard to what has happened throughout the nation with regard to the red light camera programs that were meant to supposedly make streets safer. And among them is the issue of corruption. How was this program presented to the Assembly? Who may benefit from it? Was it used primarily for revenue purposes? Because if it is, then it is subject to misuse or not to achieve its proper objectives. I would hesitate to improve, to suggest that this program be implemented because you need to know what can go wrong and what has gone wrong in the past with regard to this. Where have the abuses been? How was the general public impacted negatively with regard to this program? Right? The number of tickets that were done that were perhaps assigned to individuals that were innocent, the number of attorneys that were basically now hired and concentrated on this particular business of basically protecting those accused of basically speeding, and the impacts that it may have on the insurance cost to those individuals that were charged or ticketed incorrectly. I am suggesting that the city really take a close look at a proper analysis of the current data that's available at the police department with regard to pedestrian vehicular collisions before you put yourselves into this particular program. Thank you.
Question. Is that our last speaker?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Carpet.
Muslim Alano, would you do us a favor and share your data with the council and the management? Because you mentioned 120 collisions, car with pedestrians on yearly basis, that's 10 a month. And I know we had reports here in the past. I've never seen anything like that. I just want to, if you share the data with us, then we can, we can maybe discuss it later, but...
Those reports used to be online from the police department under the reports. It basically is within the system. About three years ago, those reports were changed and are no longer available as easily. But it is available from the Glendale Police Department, and those are the annual vehicular collisions, part of the crime report.
Councilman? Yes, Carpetian, Mayor Najarian, the police department on a regular basis posts the crime rates on our website, so they are still available.
Crime rate or the accident?
Accidents. Yeah, it's accidents, yeah.
Okay, that concludes the speakers. Let's go to council. Councilmember Asateryan?
So for, you have number, for number three, five, and seven, I'm sorry, I'm going to say three and five first, Glendals Boulevard. I don't know if you have any data by you to speak to this, but we always hear about, you know, Glendals being one of the main... but we always hear about, you know, Glen Oaks being one of the main roads for speeding and racing. And I have just general concerns that if we are utilizing these systems and putting them into place, why we only have, you know, Allen to Roberta and then Kennelworth to Central. I can picture, especially around Highland, which I've heard quite a bit. And I'll say that my campaign headquarters, when I was running for council, was on that corner. And just what I saw on a daily basis around there, why the cutoff? Why not extend through, you know, from, say, if you're feeling like Central's the one endpoint, why not go from Central all the way to Roberta on Glen Oaks, given the history of racing and whatnot on Glen Oaks to begin with?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Asatrian. Yes, the data showed us that Glen Oaks Boulevard definitely needs to be on the list because of the speeding, that data that we accumulated, feedback from the police department, as well as the citation information that we reviewed. And furthermore, the input from the community is loud and clear that that was one of their most concerns. So the intent here, as the locations were selected, is to get the most coverage that we could along Glen Oaks from both ends, from the Burbank border, you know, all the way to where it narrows down to two lanes.
Wouldn't, and again, I'm not poking holes here. I'm just, I'm genuinely asking questions as you were kind of speaking and I was going through this report. Wouldn't the midpoint be the point that you would want to cover versus the edges?
Yeah, we do.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know what the data looks like for Glen Oaks.
We do have the consultant here that may be able, Kim Lee Horn, that may be able to provide some insight. I do see that around the middle, there's a curved portion. So those elements are also taken into account to be able to get adequate sight distance for the cameras. But if you'd like, I can ask the consultant.
I would appreciate that.
And so this, Ms. Alyssa Panov from Kim Lee Horn will be coming up to answer the question.
Thank you so much. As you pointed out, Glen Oaks is a challenging corridor. When we were looking at the locations, there are a number of things that we looked at, including the density of crashes and the locations of the citations. The crash data that we looked at was specific to speed-related crashes. And these locations that we have recommended come up because they do have a larger density of those things. While along the entire Glen Oaks corridor, there are citations and safety challenges, these locations that we selected are, have the primary density of those crashes, and that's why these were selected. And as Pastor mentioned, we do have to have diversity of the locations, so we can't have them all along the same corridor as required by the Assembly Bill.
So the others do have perhaps less density or less crashes, but because of the diversity, you're required to, or you're not able to cover all of Glen Oaks Boulevard or whatever stretch?
Correct.
Okay, and so I guess my second question to that would be that I know that this, you know, the bill particularly and any funding for it was also put in as requests from both the state and I believe the federal request that went in. If we do end up getting funding for it, is there opportunity to add more?
The Assembly Bill only allows nine locations within the city. I am not privy to what's happening at the Assembly level, but there is, part of the Assembly Bill is we evaluate the locations after 18 months. And there is an ability at that time to determine additional, not additional locations, but move the locations that are selected to one of the other top 16. You can only have nine, though, as required by the Assembly Bill.
The initial 16 that you had, I know one of the areas that I keep hearing about is right by the freeway entrance. Was that one of the points that was identified? Or is it one of those things I just happen to see a lot or hear about a lot and data shows otherwise?
There is a location on San Fernando that is near the freeway, and that's one of the top 16 locations.
I believe it's the one on Brand Boulevard, if I'm not mistaken, the Brand entrance. I'm always getting tagged in from, like, an office building or someone taking a photo of a crash from office spaces in those high rises. There tends to be a lot of collision, and so I'm just, I don't know if you're capturing that data.
Councilmember Asatrian, I believe the focus with this pilot program is more on speeding rather than preventing crash. But as part of the analysis, in order to pick the nine locations, they have combined the number of crashes where the speeding is high.
Okay.
Yeah, and if I may add also, there's the socioeconomic component. So the program really requires that we take a look at that so you don't end up with the concentration of locations in certain areas of the city, and it's balanced out throughout the city.
I see that, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, and if you could stay because I think maybe you can address this. It's not so much a question, but I'd like this clarified for the community because we heard some comments before about the red light cameras.
Yes.
Can you explain, because these are very, very different types of systems?
Right.
The red light camera, I'll just give a little preface, but the red light camera, you know, was identifying the driver and it was assigning a criminal penalty to the driver. This is identifying the car and assigning a civil penalty, like a parking ticket, to the registered owner of that car. But could you maybe just elaborate on how this is different and why all these issues we've had in California with the red light cameras are kind of considered in how this was designed? I don't know, I thought, oh, okay, maybe that's for you.
Yeah, because that question has come up before. And what we do know is City of Glendale participated in a group of cities' meetings with the other five cities that are on the program. We had the opportunity to meet with some of the creators of the language of AB 645. So they knew the challenges that had faced the red light photo enforcement, which, as you mentioned, Councilmember Brotman included taking a photo of the actual person driving the vehicle, right? That became an issue. And so the new legislation changed that. So now the only picture that's taken is of the license plate, and the type of ticket is different. It's only, it's like a parking ticket. It does not go on your driving record and you're not, it's not a criminal or a misdemeanor type offense. It's like a parking ticket.
Yeah, that's correct. I think that it also requires less staff time on the city's end to operate the Speed Safety Enforcement Program as compared to the red light enforcement.
Right, and I think if I could, another one of, I mean, the criticisms of the red light cameras were that it was prone to error, dispute, argument. Another criticism was that some people argued it actually led to crashes as people would try to, like, rush through a light or something like that before, you know, before it turned red. And I think a third criticism was that a lot of people saw it as just a money grab, right? And so I think with this program, I mean, maybe you can address the fact that, you know, the citation amounts are relatively low, but also where that money is going and the limits on where that money is going. And the fact that we are providing so many, you know, like, there are warnings before you reach the camera. There are, or there's signage, I should say, before you reach the camera. There are warnings for the first time you get caught speeding, you know, et cetera, et cetera. There are a lot of things, I think, in this system that are kind of showing that it's really designed to slow people down, not to give people tickets. And maybe you could address some of those.
Sure, Councilmember Brotman, a lot of good points. And I'll focus right now on the revenue, right, for the citations. The revenue for the citations can only be used to recover the cost of the program itself. Any revenue beyond that must be used only for traffic calming measures on the same streets where these programs are going. And at the end of a three-year period, if there's any revenue left over, that money would go back to the state of California to direct towards the state's active transportation program. So that's, the only uses of that money is for the program itself, and ultimately can go back to the state. Regarding, can you bring, one of the other questions that you'd like?
No, I mean, you addressed the fact that the camera is just picking up the license plate and it's to the registered owner. I think that simplifies a lot of these potential areas of dispute, right?
Yeah, so the legislation authorizes that citations are only civil penalties, which are the fines. The fines start at $50, which is the lowest fine. And that lowest fine only occurs if you're traveling at over 10 miles per hour above the speed limit, so from 11 to 15 miles per hour. So of course, it has a tiered approach that goes up to 500, but there's also the $100 range for speeders from 16 to 25 miles per hour, $200 for over 26 miles per hour, and ultimately, over 100 miles per hour would yield a $500 fine.
And maybe just to add, there is a warning period, like you suggested, before the program is fully implemented. There is a warning period so that people are aware that this program is coming to alert them to change their behavior in advance of the program. And there are special accommodations made for what is called an indigent person. So people of a certain income class do have a different penalty or fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garbich.
Couple of quick questions. So this was approved by the governor in October of 2023. So does it mean that every city has to have this program? What does it mean when the governor approved it?
As the bill states, that six cities within California are allowed to implement this program.
Only six cities?
Six cities, yes. Glendale, Long Beach, and Los Angeles in Southern California. And in Northern California, there's another three other cities in Northern California.
There is a law only for six cities and they're not providing any funding for us? Because we basically volunteered, right? Because comparing to San Francisco and Los Angeles and Long Beach and San Jose or Otavio, they're much, much larger cities. So we volunteered, but they have no funding for it?
That is correct. The state did not allocate funding as part of the bill.
Okay, so these cameras are, are they the same cameras here and the other cities? Or there are different vendors that provide these cameras?
There are different vendors available. We know of different vendors. There's also different models, one of which we provided information on, which is the city's ability to purchase cameras and install it.
And San Francisco started this program already?
Yes, in March, late March.
March of this year?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so there's not much data so far to find out if it's working, how does it work and everything? And how is it set, let's say, because I was looking at, you know, like, Councilman Asatrian, I was looking on Glen Oaks, I was looking at, like, Brand from Harvard to Lexington. It's like five or six blocks, right, city blocks. Is it a camera installed on each side of the street? Or is one pole, two cameras facing different directions? How does it, how is it, let's say, there is a car speeding on Brand close to Lexington, how does this camera capture that car and the speed of it? The two cameras, one on top and one in the bottom, or how does it work?
Sure, the layout of the camera locations can vary from location to location. Brand Boulevard is wide and certain sections has a median. So in those locations, it would be fair to say that there would be two cameras, one for each direction. And those cameras would be pointing towards the rear of the vehicle as it's driving away to capture the rear license plate.
Okay, so it captures the speed of the car only when it's close to it? Because if it's like four blocks away and it's speeding?
Yes, that's correct, yes. It's going to be within a certain distance. I don't know what exactly that distance is, but it's going to be in close proximity to the cameras.
Okay, and could our police department's intelligence center, you know, we have this new system, can this connect to that system or is it not allowed?
It's not allowed under the AB 645 policy to protect the privacy rights.
And we have how many cameras that's going to be installed?
Nine systems.
Nine systems.
So there can be multiple cameras per system?
Multiple cameras per system, so one section can have four cameras?
No, like, in terms of directional.
Okay, so one, two per location that we chose already? Nine locations we have, okay. And as far as the cost goes, because a million dollars a year, it's a big cost. It's like three police officers salaries. For us, what's the, what do they call it? The work, the life expectancy of these cameras, the working life of those cameras? Is it like one year, two years, five years, 10 years? What is it?
We would have to check with the manufacturers and vendors. However, this is a five-year pilot program. And the maintenance and operation of the cameras would vary depending on the type of contract that the city would ultimately engage in. If it's a contract where it's designed, built, operated, and maintained by the vendor, we wouldn't have to worry about the maintenance and operations, failures, and that sort of thing. But again, this is a five-year pilot program.
It's better to lease them than owning them?
That's one of the options, the contract options, yes.
I hope it will make a huge difference because we need to slow down the traffic in our city. We'll see how it goes. I mean, the first year will have a big indication as to how effective these cameras are and how can we, I think, cameras being there will slow down the traffic for sure. That's like when you see a police officer, everybody slows down. So it's something like that. So I'm okay with it. I think we need to do something, and this is a great program. And we got in, it's one of the five. And hopefully, some funding will come from our state legislatures. Instead of just signing a bill, maybe have, cough up some money so we can install them and manage them well, so it will be effective. Otherwise, if it's not effective, no one else is going to use it. All these lobbies that you're doing, maybe this is one of them to say, hey, we have, it's part of this program.
We actually put this as part of the request for state funding. And I know you had a question about the pedestrian, so pedestrian collision, involved collisions was 104 in 2024. And that included 99 with injuries and three with fatalities as part of the police report. One too many, and it went up a couple in the last year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kasakian.
Well, I want to thank my colleagues for asking a lot of questions because I think you got a lot of information out there. I don't have any questions, per se, but I will ask some just for clarification to reiterate and what has been said and was just asked. The cost of this per year is a million dollars, correct?
That's one of the options that was presented.
One of the options, and then there was a 744, 800,000, the suite of options. But does that, how much of that takes into consideration funds that we would recoup from the issuance of these citations?
Yes, Councilmember Kasakian, it doesn't take into account at all any potential revenue. So in staffs...
I don't know if I like the term revenue as much because it almost seems like we're out there trying to farm and find funds for the city when that's truly not the purpose, right? We are trying to eliminate bad behavior, people who are breaking the law. But it helps offset the cost of the enforcement. And I understand why in municipal parlance, you may use revenue and we may be using it, but I think it's more about recouping the costs through enforcement. And so the cost of at least one police officer is approximately $300,000. If we were to spend a million dollars, we would get maybe three police officers. I know that, you know, as much faith and trust as I have in our men and women who wear the badge in blue, I don't think three police officers can be in nine different locations. But I think that at least having these cameras deployed in nine different locations will help make the city much, much safer. I've said this a number of times. I think everyone up here on this dais agrees or should agree that, you know, we want our city's streets and sidewalks and crosswalks to be safe. I do echo what Councilmember Asatrian said about the stretch of Glen Oaks, particularly the one around... the one around Highland. I understand the curve, the line of sight issues. I will trust that staff has done their homework and has done it appropriately, and hopefully working with our police department and whatever vendor we decide to use for this program, will monitor and see this program's efficacy. I do think that there is stretches of Glen Oaks that anyone who lives in that area, and I happen to be one of the people who does, will tell you that there, it can be very, very bad around the Highland where seven, the 7-Eleven store is and close to the high school. So hopefully, the area that we've chosen does capture those people before they decide to use the rest of Glen Oaks as a Speedway. And with that, I support this effort. A million dollars is a bargain, whether we pay for it or whether we get state grants, and I'm happy to go up to Sacramento and shake whatever money tree is up there to get the funds we need to keep our community safe.
Just have one additional comment. I know that Public Works, as well as RPD, you know, look to purchase cameras in general, right? I don't know if this can be part of a larger buy that is planned, but if there, if it can be, and you end up, you know, paying less because you're purchasing more cameras, then, you know, that should be taken into consideration. I don't know if, you know, there is opportunity there, but I recognize it's not going to be connected to our real-time intelligence center, but I'm just trying to think through, like, you know, what other purchasing we're doing at the same time that we can, you know, plug this into and try to save some money wherever we can.
The only other thing, Mr. Mayor, I would add is on the speeding violation penalties list that we have, I think some of these are just too low. For anyone who's driving 100 miles per hour over the speed limit, $500 is the least of what they should be forced to pay to the city. I would, I don't know, repossess their car or whatever needs to be done, revoke their driving privileges.
I'm going to make, yeah, before we go around for two bites, I'm gonna first say, I fully support this. I think this is going to be a game changer in the city of Glendale. I have no sympathy for those individuals who receive these administrative citations or civil penalties, whatever we want to call them. I think there should be something much more serious. I think we have to give credit to then Assemblyperson Laura Friedman, who, while sitting at this dais, I think in Mr. Garbettiyan's seat, heard so many of the complaints that we hear all the time about the speeding. And when she went to Sacramento, she decided to do something about it. And that's why Glendale is one of the cities that are in here. We didn't so much volunteer as were granted the opportunity to pursue this type of enforcement. So thank you to now Congresswoman Friedman. I think it's a good, like I said, this is going to be a game changer. I can't wait for this to come into play. And then here are the results. I'd like to have a tally of, you know, how many cars we got and what their speeds were, because I think will really be eye-opening. Mr. Brotman?
Yes. You stole my thunder a little bit on now Congresswoman Friedman. I did want to thank her if she's watching, or if anybody's watching on her behalf. And you're right, we are part of this, you know, six cities, and they're all big cities, San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose, Long Beach, you know, mid-sized city, Los Angeles, and us. So we got in this because of now Congresswoman Friedman, also because of our police department, because our then-police chief was part of the advisory body that led to the design of this. So we have to give our police department some kudos. They wanted this, and they supported this, and they helped make sure that this was designed so that it would be effective. So thanks to all of them. There is, oh, and let me just, as an aside, I know one of the things that I've heard from the police department is, yes, you can have officers do this work, but there's always a risk. Whenever you make a stop for a car, there's always some level of risk, right? You don't know what you're gonna, what you're gonna find. And there's also potential for bias, and, you know, there've been criticisms that certain types of people get pulled over more than others. So this is completely neutral, right? This doesn't care what you look like, what kind of car you're driving, it just looks at how fast you're going, right? And it just mails that ticket. And yes, I wish they were bigger penalties, but I think for her to get this through the assembly at the time and get it signed off by the governor, she had to, you know, kind of make it modest, modest level of penalties, only nine cameras for a city of our size, et cetera, et cetera. And she did, I think, make three attempts, at least two, but I think three, before she got it through the assembly and got it signed, I think got vetoed once. So hats off to her. The only concern I have is about privacy. I know that it captures, these cameras will capture a lot of extraneous data that isn't used, and as, as you reported, Mr. Casanova, that data gets erased after, you know, within five days. And only the data that is related to a violation is retained, and only the license plate. What I would like to make sure when we enter into these discussions with a vendor is that we have very good safeguards, so we can be sure that this data is being erased, we understand how it's being erased, and that it is not recoverable. Because in this day and age, we just don't want that data, right? Somebody could come to us, federal government, anybody, requesting that data. We can have all the policies in the world, but if that data is there, somebody can get it. So I think we need to be very, very careful to make sure in those discussions with the vendor that we know and can verify that this data is completely erased and not recoverable. And that, I'm talking about the extraneous data, the unnecessary data. So I just wanted to put that out there as probably my number-one concern. But I'm with the mayor, I'm really excited about this. I hope it's a game changer, and I hope it's a game changer not because we're issuing a lot of tickets, but because people slow down because they know it's there. That would be actually the biggest win for everyone. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing at this point.
One last question.
Okay. If you're going to ask a question, I'll open the public hearing again.
I'm just a little bit not clear as to what this program is, because let's say Burbank wants to purchase these cameras and implement the same program, they can't do it because of the assembly bill?
Correct. It wasn't, it wasn't allowed until this assembly bill was enacted, so.
Wow, interesting. Okay, then we're one of the lucky ones.
Yes. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item. And I think what we're moving is just the policy and the impact report.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Garbettiyan?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Okay, well, we're not there yet, but we're on our way. Next item, please.
Next is item 12, Discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Requests. Item A.
Did you pull that?
Councilmember Brotman's request to agendize a discussion regarding an electronic shuttle program such as the Long Beach Circuit Program, and have staff schedule a presentation of this program at a future city council meeting. We do have one speaker card.
Oh, yeah, on this, I would just ask that we actually hold this. And the reason I'm going to ask that is because there is a effort to schedule a visit to Long Beach to observe this program in action. Councilmember Najarian and I are planning to go down with the city manager and Mr. Stevenson from the DGA. And when we come back, I think we'll have more information that we can then bring it up at that time.
That's exactly right. And the city manager has offered to buy us lunch while we're in Long Beach. So if anyone else wants to join the delegation, you're more than welcome to be scheduled. I don't think we have a date yet, but it'll be some good background as we take this issue up. Okay, thank you, Mr. Brotman.
There's one more.
Yes.
Yes, 12B.
12B is Councilmember Brotman's request to agendize a discussion regarding building efficiency and electrification.
Okay, so this one, I did give a preamble two weeks ago, and I'll try to keep it simple. We have been working on a electrification reach code to replace the old reach code that we had to suspend because of the Berkeley California Restaurant Association case. So we were working on a replacement reach code. However, my recommendation is that we change direction. We drop that effort because much of what we were hoping to achieve is already built into the 2025 Title 24, Part 6 California Energy Code. Instead, I would like to look at the potential for adopting several CalGreen voluntary codes, what are called CalGreen voluntary codes. That means they're voluntary for cities to adopt. And there are a number of CalGreen codes that relate to energy efficiency in both existing and new buildings. The one I'm most focused on is a requirement, and this would be for existing buildings only, that when an owner of that, a property owner replaces an air conditioning system, that they replace it with a, what's called a two-way heat pump. That means a heat pump that provides both cooling and heating. And when the staff, when staff comes back with a report, they can explain what that's all about. But that would be my primary interest. There are a number of other CalGreen codes that deal with both existing and new building energy efficiency. I will leave it to staff, they're smaller, they're, I think, less impactful, but I would leave it to Mr. Jones, who'll be the one to come back to us with, on this, to perhaps mention some others that we could potentially consider. But my main interest is on, on heat pumps.
We do have a speaker on this item?
Yes, we have one speaker, Beth Brooks.
Okay, we pass.
And I should, and I, if I could just say, all of this that we're talking about, this is in a CalGreen code that will be effective January 1st, 2026. It has already gone through the cost-effectiveness analysis at the state level, meaning that's been demonstrated to be cost-effective over the life cycle. So some of these products may be more expensive to install, but there are energy gains so that there's a break even, and staff can tell us more about how that works. We may still want to vet these for cost-effectiveness using local rates, our own utility rates, but that's something that, again, Mr. Jones can, can fill in the details on.
Well, just one question, and not to discuss it, I know we didn't want to get into that, but if, is the heat pump law gonna come in, it gonna be mandatory in 2026? Or that's not?
No, this is a voluntary code that we can adopt to make it mandatory in Glendale.
Got it. Okay, so, are we moving, Mr. Garbettiyan?
Yeah, if this is a voluntary code, a city can adopt and make it mandatory, I'm totally against it. I don't think it's in the best interest of the city to force people into what kind of an equipment or AC unit that we want them to use. I think it's just ridiculous. Heat pump units, look at what's going on in Europe right now. Spain, Portugal, parts of France, they're out of electricity. Imagine you have a heat pump unit in the middle of summer or middle of winter, there is no electricity, you don't have a choice. But if you have a choice of gas or electric, let people decide which one they want, they want to use. I don't like a heat pump unit, for example. I don't have to be forced to use a, a unit that the council is forcing onto the people. And it's, one other thing is, when you want to change your unit from gas to, to electric, it's not just a unit. There's so much more involved in it that, all your wiring, or your panels and everything. I know we are not discussing it, but I want to put it out there. I don't think, this is in the best interest of the city.
Okay, it's not gas to electric, I just want to, I just want you to understand, it's not gas to electric. It's an electric air conditioning unit to an electric heat pump that also provides, that provides the cooling and the heating.
Okay, so if this comes forward, we'll get some of that information.
Get all that detail out.
Rather than hash it out at the moment. So we do motion and a second, and then roll call on this? Okay, so Mr. Brotman, I'm putting the motion on you.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I mean, I think it's fine to have a discussion, let's have the discussion that we're trying to have here now at that time, I'll second.
Thank you, and let's take roll call then.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes, but I would like to make sure that beyond Mr. Jones, that our planning and building and safety are part of that report that come through, because I don't want to end up with a report that doesn't take into consideration the details, and it's just coming from our sustainability office. So that's, you know.
That would be an amendment, accepted as a friendly amendment.
Yes, that makes a lot of sense.
But we still have the motion, we have the second, and it was your vote.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Garbettiyan?
No.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes, for discussion purposes. Okay, next item.
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have seven speaker cards. I'm not sure that all, all individuals are still in the council chambers, but I will call their names.
Let me shout out, go down your list and start.
The first is Shelton. Next is Beth Brooks. You have five minutes.
I'm going to read it so I can. Okay, I preface this by saying I'm not a lawyer, obviously, but nor am I someone who thinks it's normal that we should allow what happened two weeks ago to pass without consequences. For the past two weeks, I've done enough research to determine that I believe Mr. Najarian's selection as mayor, while obviously unethical in the way it was done, was very likely illegal. Because of that, I'm going to ask permission from the California Attorney General to mount a Quo Veronto lawsuit as a private person. You probably know that I met with Mr. Garcia about what transpired on April 15th, and he defended your actions as fair, transparent, and legal, none of which they were. In fact, for Mr. Garcia, there may be some ethical questions about his office since they drafted the non-policy policy, which they appear to have slipped in at the last moment, which is at the heart of this controversy. I read Mr. Najarian's full case report and the judge's ruling, and I realized that that was your justification for installing Mr. Najarian. But it's not actually as open-ended as you think. The judge's ruling did not address subsection C, which prohibits a council member from being selected as mayor in their last term in office, which applies to Mr. Najarian this year, but didn't apply to him when he mounted his lawsuit. So I repeat, because this is very important, the judge's ruling did not take into account subsection C. As far as subsection H, the best interest clause, which was used by the council twice now to bypass the city's ordinance on mayoral selection, to choose anyone they want, no reasons given. Subsection H is also not as legally airtight as you think. The subsection says that you must choose a qualified council member. The use of that adjective qualified is critical, because it appears to limit your choices and could legally be interpreted as meaning only council members who are not disqualified from being mayor can be selected. There are only two subsections that outline disqualifications, one of which is subsection C, which disqualifies Mr. Najarian. As you know, the law is all about language. One single word can make something legal versus illegal. Mr. Garcia suggested to me that qualified simply means that all council members were qualified to be mayor. This, of course, makes no sense, because that would have been accomplished by just saying council member. Again, the law is all about language. Also in subsection H is the phrase notwithstanding. Also in subsection H is the phrase notwithstanding these provisions. I believe that the city council wrongly used that phrase to nullify all the subsections that came before, rendering subsection C as irrelevant. But the phrase doesn't nullify anything, I've since learned. It means that subsection H subverts the previous subsections, but that doesn't mean that they cannot be used as consideration. And I would argue, and I believe that a judge might agree, that because the word qualified was added in subsection H, it forces the consideration of subsection C, which disqualifies Mr. Najarian. When I spoke to Mr. Garcia about my intention to pursue a quo aronto lawsuit, he told me that he doubted very much that a judge would second guess the decision of a city council. I believe he's right about that. I believe that's why Mr. Najarian lost his lawsuit. But I also believe April 15th changed all that, because while a judge may not want to inspect or go against the decisions of a city council once, they may not be so positive when a city council has now established a pattern of abuse, which is what you did by pulling the stunt, not once, but twice. You subverted and perverted the rule of law and the city's ordinance for personal reasons, and violated the public trust for two years in a row. I don't believe that a judge will take this lightly. I also suspect, after rewatching the April 1st and 15th videos of the city council meetings, that the four of you likely violated the Brown Act prohibition against serial meetings, so, but I'm gonna look into a public records request for your texts and emails. I firmly believe that Mr. Najarian should resign, because even if I don't get permission to sue from the Attorney General, the rogue behavior of the city council warrants at least media investigation, because there's a lot more corruption here than I'm talking about. And it will open everything up. If, as Mr. Kasakian and others of you have said on April 15th, the mayor is merely a figurehead, occupying a different spot in the dais, why is this the hill you want to die on? I want to thank Mr. Garpedian for his decency and class, and for always championing transparency for the public. Thank you.
Thank you for the layperson's evaluation of the law. Stay tuned for next week's chapter. Next, please.
Next is Herbert Mulano. Following Herbert is Suren Khodavert.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Mulano. I would like to address to you two major issues that have to do with finance. I believe that for anything that you take up with, that has to do with taxpayers' use of money, or loans, or borrowing, that we should know how much it's gonna cost, what are gonna be the benefits, and who's gonna pay for it. There is another question that we could ask is, how do you measure whether something that you're promoting is gonna have the results that are intended? So having a target as to say, we're gonna do this project, and here's how we're gonna measure whether or not it is successful. And I think that oftentimes, that's missing from our discussions. So we depend on something else. We depend on the annual comprehensive financial report, especially the last section, the statistical section, which helps a lot. And I wish that all the numbers that we have, we have ten, usually 10 years' worth of data, that they all appear on the same ones. You open up this book, that you can see it all at a glance. Because we need some information that is essential for us to be able to assess how the city is doing. But let me start with the following. Multiple times, it has been addressed here in the city council, that we have a population of 200,000. I look at the census report and at various other sources, and we have been declining in population since 2018. We broke 200,000 population in 2018, and it's been dropping by around 2% per year. Our population is around 187,000. And that should be consistent throughout all of the reports that the city produces. To find an agency like our, our city police department using wrong information to make an analysis is not acceptable, I don't think, for anybody. So let me go through the, some of the areas that I feel are deficient or that need improvement. I believe that the statistical section should have at least some information that allows you to measure how each department is performing. If it is, we have roughly 75,000 homes. We should know, for example, what is the debt per household? And how, what was the debt per household back in, you know, 10 years ago, and how much it is now, so that we can determine what is the burden that the population has with regard to debt. Additionally, I would like to know what has been the deferred capital improvements that basically you have been postponing? Because as I stated earlier, we have been so much impacted by the pension system and the pension payments, that it is at least $500 million more than we would have without the changes that occurred in 2001 and 2005. And that's not counting the debt that has been accumulated that is unfunded, another set, nearly $700 million. I would also like to suggest that the audit committee be enhanced. This idea that the most important committee that the city has only meets four times a year, and oftentimes it is postponed, like it was postponed last week, I think that the audit committee should be meeting monthly, and that they should be doing audits for all departments on all of the major expenditures. To me, it is unacceptable that a department, such as the Glendale Fire Department, that in the last 10 years have increased its expenditures by 80%, while the CPI has increased by 33% should not be audited. The last time I checked, the last time I found that they were thoroughly investigating, audited, was around 2013. And it was a fairly good report by the audit committee. But since then, almost no accountability to the over, to the use of overtime, whether it's the proper staffing, or the outcomes with regard to the survivability of cardiac arrest. We need performance measures, and I think that we could start with at least five performance measures per department. Figure out how effective is this department, how well are they using the taxpayers' money, how is the staffing? Even getting numbers with regard to the proper staffing at the end of the year, in actual numbers, is not even presented. We use, where presented are the budgeted numbers. Well, that's for the budget. But for the actual, for the cafer, we need the actual numbers so we can evaluate how well these, these departments are doing. So there it is, an improvement in the statistical section of the financial statements, and enhancing the power and the number of meetings that the audit committee has. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Suren Khodavert.
Hi, my name is Suren Khodavert, I've been here for the last 46 years as a foreign student from Iran, and I am ashamed to live in Glendale anymore. The reason, citation, 12 o'clock, when I was in bowling, I came outside to see why we have to hire people like this. Give a citation for resident of Glendale, 12 o'clock. And I'm traveling five states in the United States the last couple of years, because I am retired. Any state, commercial area, from 6 o'clock to 6:00 in the morning, there is no, any meter to put money. Why in Glendale it's supposed to be like that? And when I hear this guy, when he talking, I put my head down, because these people came to this destroyed, beautiful Glendale. They want to sell something to you guys, and you approve the thing which you, you all forgot, America is free country. America is free country. Any camera you put in any subject, you are destroying American democracy. And these people, they were so happy, and they left. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Asadrian.
Mr. Glanion, I've actually brought this up several times with our police chief, and I think as well as with you, not necessarily someone receiving a ticket that's due, but looking at the contract for our, who were contracting out for the parking citations. I have time and again gotten complaints from residents in their behavior. I, I have witnessed it myself. I don't think it speaks to our values and how we take certain measures and our expectations for our, from our police department. My hope is that somehow we can have a conversation around what parameters we're putting in place. I, last time I checked, I was told that we have a new parking enforcement personnel that's overseeing the contract, and they're gonna be looking at the contract. But there's been way too many residents that have been continuously complaining about, not necessarily just receiving tickets, but like the company not using any discretion, and their behavior is something that I personally find offensive, and have a certain expectation of professionalism, especially when dealing with our residents, our visitors, and our small businesses. So I'm bringing this up again, because he mentioned it, I've been wanting to bring this up. I just felt like every time my council comments are too long, and so this was my perfect opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I, I forgot to say one more thing to mention. Before, for cleaning the, every street, twice the clean, that person which you clean, come and clean. Not last four, five years, only once come. And I have a picture, I have a picture here, instead of cleaning, it threw, I don't know, the machine it didn't work. I have all this picture, if you want, you can see. The thing which is, they put all the trash, all the street, and he left. Because probably that machine it didn't function, or I don't know. I took a picture here to show what's going on, reality. We are real people which live in Glendale.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna invite you to speak to Dom, this young lady who's familiar with some of these issues, and I think she'll look at your case, and maybe explain to council the details of what happened.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next is Nina Rostamian. Next is Romela Inagi.
Ms. Mayor, council, adios. They already saw my face.
You can turn around, by the way, you can turn around if you want to, I won't throw you out.
Yeah, well, I have a lot of objection, objection to the rules and regulation of this, to how to conduct the council, the meeting, council meetings. So that's, that's what I'm gonna talk about today. Yeah, I, one of the major problem that I have with is the number of the cards that are available for the public at the beginning, at the committee event announcements, at the beginning of the council meeting, only five cards, which are usually taken by the people that are promoting their so-called cultural events, or by Mike Mohol and his friends. And, 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 many times they will come in, those cards are not available, and I have to wait till end of this long hours of a council meeting to come to the podium and make my points. Versus Burbank council meetings, that those cards, number of cards are like unlimited cards available to the public. That is, unlimited public that can come to the podium and talk to the council at the beginning of the council meetings. I, I've told this before, yeah, so, so I suggest, actually, I suggest that the new mayor maybe change this, maybe add more cards to the oral communication, the committee, at the committee event announcements. Yeah, that is one of the suggestions that I have. And next thing I wanna address to, it's the whether the city of Glendale is a sanctuary city, which I asked many people, and they said is not. The city of, city of Glendale hasn't declared the, hasn't been declared as a sanctuary city. And I suggest that you agendize this, since city of Burbank has adopt, has adopted this policy, and has announced the city of Burbank as a sanctuary city. And this, this is very important, that, that makes it clear, this policy makes it more clear that, that, that the, that the police is not involved, or is not cooperating with, with ICEs to arrest undocumented people. So, yeah, I strongly suggest that you agendize this, since the, the post department, Glendale Post Department announced that it's not gonna cooperate with the, with ICEs. And yet, yes, I have, so, ICEs is upcoming, less often to the council meeting, that's where I'm talking, about different, different issues. So, another thing, just, just for, for the record, another, another like 30 units of the apartment building was evicted based on renovations, and 125 West Justine Avenue in, in Glendale. So, yeah, I just want to, you know, that, just, people are keep, keep kicking out of their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next is Ellen Dish.
Good evening, city council, good evening. Thank you, everyone who is here. I would like to talk about the mayoral selection process of two weeks ago, if that's okay. I, first allow me to say I know, now that it's over, like my words may not have the same impact as they would have last time, but I would still like to begin. I want to state my admiration for Mr. Garpedian for how he handled himself, and I also recognize the legitimacy of the mayor, Mr. Najarian. At the same time, I think what Mr. Garpedian went through was not good. I believe in appearances, you know, that maintaining appearances, it's the form which was impolite. And of course, this is not law, like politeness, you cannot directly force it, like politically, political correctness tries. So as to the content, it was incredible. I consider it a sincere apology, we could call it, or statement that you made, Mr. Najarian. It was a risk, I must say, that the entire council took because of how this decision may be retroactively perceived, like we can name them, losing people's trust and so on, why did it have to be done by skipping Mr., another council member's turn, he was not informed and so on, in front of his family, and so on, and so on. So again, I congratulate the mayor, but also Mr. Garpedian, for, as Ms. Beth Brooks put it so eloquently and others, maintaining your tact, dignity, and it speaks to your character, basically, in, in the sense of, again, that, that you, in a moment of despair, you displayed instead preparedness and bravery. I would put it this way. So, just to reiterate why I admire, well, I don't, I wouldn't say admire, the, the process, selection that happened, yes, in principle, a council member formerly who had gone rogue, let's say, recanted for past mistakes, consensus was reached, order was reestablished, power smoothly reproduced itself in a moment of restoration, a small but important, I would add, victory for the liberal center in a moment of, given recent losses in presidential congressional races, but, like in the radio Yerevan jokes, but it was done by undermining potentially people's trust, legitimacy, and so on, not just this backroom deal, but that he was not informed so, properly. So, these are a list of things I have written, I'm approaching a conclusion. Yes, it resulted in a split of allegiance among conservatives, which could contribute to increased animosity and resilience. which could contribute to increased animosity and resentment against the liberal center, which is wrongly called socialists, communists. Two, it threatens to alienate people, I'm repeating myself, erodes trust. Three, it undermines perceptions of good manners and common decency. What Hegel calls "zitlichkeit," ethical order, the thick texture of mostly unwritten rules which regulate our everyday lives. Now I conclude that this is why I still believe in Glendale. In the sense that I admire the council. I believe, though, the time has come for serious decisions, strong decisions. Mayor, I am appealing to you now, that, to consciously provoke you. I propose in your first 90 days that you declare some executive orders, let's call them. No, like, for example, putting a ban on tree cutting, and so on. Like, I would say part of this selection process in the background, it was those trees which were falling. You can do it. I am for a leftist Trump, which means some kind of charismatic leader that the left needs. But Trump, in the sense that we need strong leadership. My God, FDR even did things without consulting Congress directly, the people. You can do it, Mr. Najarian. I really think, I'm sorry if I failed at this plea, but like, I'm quite serious at the same time. Like, this may be one way you can save the situation, by being strong on ecology with executive orders. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so obviously I can't do that, Mr. Dish. I appreciate your expansion on the Glendale Charter, but that's just...
We have one more caller, one more public speaker.
And while we're on it, why would you say this is a triumph of the liberal, liberal left? How do you know? The liberal center? Okay, I think what, what you saw was a triumph of a bipartisan action. As Hegel, how did Hegels, I'll, I'll talk to you later about. Next speaker.
Our last speaker is Joyce Ruiz, and she's on air. Joyce, you have five minutes, you're on air.
Thank you so much for your time to the council and also to the mayor. I want to talk to you guys again in regards to the rent evictions, substantial renovations that are going on at a high level, that is displacing so many good people in the city of Glendale. And I heard the guys say earlier that I count as far as people that live here in Glendale, it's gone down. And I've talked to people numerous times, and they said they moved out of Glendale because of some of the, I hate to say imperfections when it comes to housing and not being as tenant-friendly. I'd ask each of you respectfully to restore the relocation assistance that you voted against last year. You removed the relocation assistance in regards to substantial renovations for properties that have three to four units. Why? I'm still waiting for an answer. I see we have a new mayor. I, I, I guess this just recently happened, I guess. But we need help in making sure that tenants are staying house. Some of these, and I, I can't say many, but I know some of these renovations are just being done to get people out, get tenants out that have lived there for a while, so that certain landlords can increase their rent. Now what I would suggest, if renovations need to be done, can the city, or I would suggest that the city, please, put into law that the tenants be allowed to come back. Your law says that the landlord is supposed to act in good faith. Good faith does not say leave so we can model, and then don't allow them to come back. When you're acting in good faith, you're supposed to be fair. You're not supposed to be deceptive. The city of Glendale needs to also provide council. There needs to be a right to council, a right to lease, a right to relocation assistance. And it just needs to be opportunities to where tenants and landlords can learn more of their rights. We're seeing too many people that are having to go to Pasadena, to LA, to court because of these substantial renovations. When will it stop? And to hear landlords and lawyers say, "Oh, certain people are not worthy of certain things." Because Glendale City Council even says they're not worthy by not agreeing to give them or offer certain people relocation assistance. They don't matter. How do you think that makes people feel? It doesn't make people feel very good. I've asked you guys numerous times, and it's very disappointing. I've asked you for your help, and it's very few of you that have responded back. But then there's over 20,000 individuals in this city that are being affected by these unjust laws. There's things that need to be done better. And I'm imploring this city council and this new mayor to put in a moratorium and stop these rent evictions immediately. Get this together, we can fix this. There's so many good people that are right there, in that room, that can help. If you need help, I'm willing to help. But we can fix this together. Nobody should be left out, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that is all.
Okay, that concludes public comment. There is nothing left on the agenda, we have no new business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
And seconded and adjourned.